You.
We're just staying tight till we get our corrections.
Are we gonna fill up forty-five minutes?
We can always bump ahead on.
For those people that, yeah, called you, you didn't call me back. So I'm keeping track of that. Oh, you're on a different list than you were on last week.
I called you back and then you texted me and said, you're gonna call me back.
Oh, wow. I forget the list. I don't have the list.
Yeah, she texted me and says, I'll call you back.
Okay, yeah, I was on the phone. I've had a lot of just miscellaneous stuff going on this week. Just we're not being recorded and there's nobody taking it.
We're being recorded. Yeah, we're being recorded.
Okay, very good.
So we just keep our.
Well, go on down here.
Let's start talking about anything until we get somebody in here. So.
Well, let's fire that person that's not here yet. She's like.
I don't know if we have that. They're elected officials. Yeah, I don't think we have that authority to do that.
How many times you have to hear that? It's all good. Here comes somebody that has.
She would be good there.
Somebody that needs something.
We see.
It's Veterans Day at the fair. Do you know what that means?
What do we grill in there?
That grill in town.
Perfect.
You know how much we love it?
I love that.
We do.
Teen year hustle with that.
Am I doing bingo this year too?
Yeah, and the girls, I have a lot of Carol area nursing wants to come and help that day. So we'll have a lot of help that day. So I figured, I told the girls, I said, oh yeah, please the bingo caller, we got them that day. So, um, can you like.
If my jokes just get funnier as I more have to be one of the citizens.
My clock just blew up in my office and I keep looking at it. Or the one back in the vault. It's just so funny. Dying slow painful death.
I've been doing it for a long time now.
And then I'm gonna get a.
Oh, well.
I had started video.
We're rolling.
Terry, it's going fabulous. Thank you for coming to our meeting today. We have already set our opening ceremony. We've already reviewed the agenda.
Does this mean anything to you?
I think they've already sent that back months ago. So I should probably just leave it.
Do you need it? Do I, we need to keep it in our stuff for you?
We probably should or could.
Okay, I didn't know for sure.
That was sent to me on my county email, which I couldn't print it from my home. And so I came up here and then we just scanned it back. And so she has gotten that and all those things.
Financial, the laws are there.
Awarded. So as soon as we have a minute, we're gonna have you read the approval of Senate because we're gonna try to keep it moving today.
No problem. And Ty's not here today.
Ty is absent today. I don't even know if he's gonna zoom in from Naco. I think he was.
I'm sure he'd be busy there.
My sister just texted me and said that they're out of power down there. Nobody knows why. It's a brownout, half power.
Oh.
Down at their place?
Yeah.
Probably because so many people are running air conditioners on.
Probably.
Megan just texted me, said they're out of power. It's half power. They're in a brownout down in our area.
Who's your power source? Who's, are you Mid-American or?
I'm mid-am. The Hog Barnes Whitcall. There's kind of a.
Oh, you're not.
Trouble with the.
Flooding?
Yeah, they're shut down substations and have to redirect stuff and draw power from other sources, you know? I think I got my hamper.
Good thing.
All right, let's.
I can read those minutes whenever y'all are ready.
We're ready.
Thanks for waiting for me.
You're welcome. I wanna take your job.
You could have started without, I mean, you did, I guess, start with, and then that's fine. Um, June eighteen, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Jean Hayden, Chair Presiding, Members Present Schultz, Dozar, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved quicker court fees for May twenty twenty-four. The board recognized change of sal, change of wages for the Treasurer's Office, DL Motor Vehicle Auditor's Office, Reporter's Office, and for Matty Jacobson, Chief Deputy Assessor's Office. A motion was made by Schultz, second of my Dozar, to approve the HVAC quote for Carroll Control Systems to replace five furnaces, five AC units, for sixty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars at the City Center Building, eleven fifteen North Fourteenth Street, Dennison. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, second by Mulbauer to approve the appointment of Alex Alvarez Garcia as medical examiner investigator for the term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, second by Dozar to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, resolution renaming to Riverbank, oh, to Riverbank and Trust, a depository with the a million dollar maximum deposit.
That's correct.
Voting I, Schultz, Dozar, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Motion passed unanimously. The board went into recess at ten thirty AM. At ten forty-four AM, a motion was made by Mulbauer, second by Dozar to open closed session of the discussion of hazardous pipelines, soil restoration ordinance, and potential litigation for Iowa Code twenty-one point five subsection one subsection C. Motion passed unanimously. Eleven thirty-two, motion was made by Dozar, second by Mulbauer to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned eleven thirty-three AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Sounded good. Yeah, you guys, you missed that little recess we had. So Terry's not here. Let's have a recess. All right, everybody agree? All ready. Uh, we've no conflicts with the agenda. Everybody's good there. We've got a minute. So, uh, we will start today with, well, I'll actually, Kyle, I'll start. Uh, we did take a little drive down to St. Dunlap Avenue.
Dunlap Avenue.
Yeah, St. Dunlap Avenue. I had got a couple of concerns, flash complaints about that they just put sand on the road and that they were getting, you know, their vehicles were getting stuck and they were getting all this sand on their vehicles, taking a long time to clean it off. So I took a drive down there and there was, you know, sand right down the middle and it wasn't planned.
That is the gravel we purchased.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty sandy. I mean, I, we took a video on a picture.
Yep.
But part of that was is we were, we were, I called Andrew again today then to make sure that, that the gravel that's on the side got mixed in with that and it wouldn't be quite, and he said that hadn't happened. So it's a lot, if it was one of those roads real close, you could drive down there a couple of times a day and see what's getting done. Have you heard any more about that or?
I talked to Paul about it. He said the road gets the same maintenance as all the other roads in the county, so.
Well, and I, uh, the, the comment was kind of that the roads around Dennison get more attention than the, and I had to.
Some of it could possibly be because they get a lot more traffic on.
Well, I, I travel, travel P Avenue a couple of times a day, sometimes you know, and it's got its issues too, you know, it's not, it's not perfect and.
Jeff Bruce said it best. Gravel roads are the ones that are rough and there's the ones that are gonna be rough.
Yeah. But I just wanted to, that, that's sad. It does look like sand.
Yeah, that's, that's what we purchased.
It's very noticeable when you come from Harrison County. What's, what stars? Anybody cares to look at a video of this?
Part of that though, what we also did this year was up our rural basic amount to help touch up spots with white rock, limestone.
There's limestone on the road.
And, you know, we also, with some of that Stratford gravel, it's a blend of ten, fifteen percent limestone in it as well that you don't see. That, you know, help bind it together. We're just, goes back to we're dealing with what resources we have.
We, all we have to do is let nature get us. It's getting further and further away.
Well, I wanted to to catch it. It was kind of pink, but it's not, it's hard to see, but you could kind of see.
I mean, I don't, yeah. Man, it's unfortunate that I feel that way, but I.
Wow.
We're not Webster County that has a quarry in your backyard.
I, yeah, I mean, we feel, we're paying our tax dollars and doing the best we can of what we have, so.
It is truly a balancing act.
Yeah.
I thought Paul was happy with the quality of the gravel. Yeah, and it usually, it, as you know, you know, it usually takes a rain or two to get some of the pines washed out and locked into place and and it is, that is what it is.
Which we've also had, you know, when we brought in Iowa State Engineers and Geologists that said, you know, a pure limestone gravel is not the, the right answer either. You know, too much sand in your gradation is not the right answer. I mean, it's, it is a mix, a blend that ties together. They can be bladed and workable.
To Paul's credit, we're like the only county that actually grades our roof ground. They wash sand out. Most other counties, just whatever comes out of holes is what they take, so. That's why we had to quit getting it out of wood burning because they couldn't effectively get enough sand washed out.
And then to Paul's credit as well, we also, like I said, are spending two hundred thousand on additional limestone to touch up those areas that do get, you know, muddier in a rainy event.
Well, and because of the rain that we've had, you know, Paul's report always has been that our roads are in the best condition they've been in with our years of drought, so, you know. That's the only complaint I've got. And I just wanted to bring that to attention that that's kind of something that is concerning taxpayers themselves.
So did you and Kyle talk to the person?
I talked to him at the, we called at five fifty-one one morning to let me know about it. And then I called Kyle, I called Dave too, but he was busy. He said Kyle could come. He was gonna be in Dennison, so we drove down there and took a look at it and I called the gentleman back. I waited a few little bit because I knew that we needed to kind of blend that a little bit. So it was, you know, the nice gravel, not my gravel, that's it. It was pretty stuff, but and he said that hadn't happened yet. So I might take a road trip down there. Well, we'll take a road trip down there today and see what it looks like today.
I did have a gentleman ask me at the end of the week, why we don't asphalt more of our roads.
And the answer is.
Well, there's large costs.
Costs.
With that and.
Large costs.
We have a limited revenue. Bank account, so that's what you, we are, like I said, trying to walk the fine line of doing the best we can with the resources we have.
Yeah, you know, we're trying to auto seal, you know, super subgrade stabilization down around the bayonade road. So, I mean, we're, we're trying. You know, I said, why cash, if cash was unlimited, we'd have a lot more paved roads.
But then again, you know, my old camaraderie in Plinett, they have a lot of highways up there. And he says, you, you know, you'd initially think, because I hear this all the time that, oh, how nice would it be if you have all these extra miles of highways within the county? And he said, no, it's worse. Because I wish a lot of them were more gravel. Exactly. Because we can't keep up with the maintenance on these highways and they are slowly deteriorating to the point where we're having to look at, really, take them back to gravel.
I heard that as well. Big Woodbury County's the same boat.
Thought that was the answer and it's not. Yeah. Just had an update on gravel roads. So, Kyle, do you want to continue?
Yeah, I will. Uh, Larry Harry reached out to me and said, we've made in one state, so I'll get ahold. He's on a fishing trip to knocked out some electrical plants at city center so we can get along with that.
Keep going on, Pat.
Yep. Uh, solid waste meeting Thursday night or check. Interesting that Yes Center Cherokee is checked. We haven't been affected by the flooding because we can't. As of yesterday, could not get in or out of Cherokee. And, uh, fortunately, MHI, the Mental Health Institute, must have an underground system yet, so they had like a day and a half water supply. Because they shut all wells down because they were flooded. They shut the sewer down. It's, uh, all that's been flooded in Cherokee, so. Hopefully they can get through this. I don't know. You know, there's, everything's flooded up that way, so I don't know whether they're gonna get water filled. I don't know if we get what treatment plans fired or what.
It's a, a real deal up there.
And it keeps moving south. So, count our blessings, we have hills. I twenty-nine, seven eleven o'clock today, don't play. Yeah, six, six eighty. Crescent to Love from Missouri Valley basically, it slows.
I know.
I did talk to the mayor of Aryan. I got a lot, Tommy came in and cleaned a bunch of the ditches out. He's cleaning a bunch of them out, so hopefully that probably will.
Craig gave me a call yesterday to call first, possibly some help with the folks that are damaged by it. Heard it's done. If somebody's trouble for getting contacts, if there's a grant, maybe anybody to assist with the cleanup part of it.
For the, the houses.
Part of it.
Yep.
Still working on it.
Yeah, but they're, they're doing what they can. I mean, the rain comes down fast and furious. As you can see, through the most part of the, you are, western part of the state, there's like.
Other nature.
Limiting of what we can control.
I also think the farmer, you know, had planted some homes and stuff and that all came down with, had a chance. So he's replanting that, but I understand should have really been to get up.
Yep.
So everybody's doing their part, I think.
Yep, I think everybody's trying to do their part. Then I just got a couple of housekeeping things here on my notes here. Friday, eleven o'clock, here comes transfer.
Yes, eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock.
Right.
Eleven, this board will meet.
Yep, eleven o'clock Friday.
Need a quorum.
Yep.
And that'll be, you know, email or zoom up, link up.
I can come in.
Yeah, yeah.
I should be able to come in. And then.
Shut, I can't.
What time did you say? Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah. That takes us into.
I know, I heard you all committed me to something. Oh, go ahead.
July first, cash.
Cash count.
Yep. Do we want to just?
You want to do your meeting that day?
Yes, yes. We're just rolling right into our meeting.
That would be the greatest.
Eight AM.
We don't have to come to.
Yep, start at eight. Um, or Megan has the forms ready, so if, or if you want to wait till Friday and take a form for Monday, that way if you have some outline stuff, you want to stop or even come to the courthouse, whatever is convenient for you guys.
Yeah. Yep, those are the things that I have my list to double check and clarify today. July first, we won't have a meeting Tuesday. What are it be? Yeah.
Should be good.
It works. And you, times that hungry canyon start? Well, it starts at ten, but the, that's for the tour. So they decided they're having a lunch at noon, so I'll just go to the lunch, skip the tour. Okay. All right. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, okay. Can you got anything?
Uh, I don't really have anything. I've got an early childhood meeting today at noon. Didn't have anything last week. Since Ty wasn't here, I do have some stuff if you need to fill in.
Okay, very good. Hey, what do you get?
Yeah, real quick.
Forty-five minutes.
When does, uh, with early childhood, Scott Larson and Mike?
Today will be there. I don't even know if they're gonna be there. I think just, I think Mike will be there because the superintendent starts tomorrow. The new business manager has started and taken over the duties. She actually sent out the financial report uh, for this month. So her name is Mallory. Mallory will be there at the meeting, so transition is taking place.
Change is hard.
Okay, you ready for me then?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Kyle and I talked with Paul this morning. Paul thought it'd be great to have Jack rework with him on your application process.
Yeah.
Paul said he was gonna reach out, be in communication with Jack himself, get that ball rolling. We kind of talked about, um, instead of having somebody come in March first and Paul's gone to, you know, that same day of maybe bringing them in and.
He said he'd be here till March twenty-fifth or whatever it is, but he's gonna be burning up vacation and stuff, so he thought it'd be great if we could get somebody hired to take shadow in January, you know, somewhere in there.
Start to learn the ropes where everything's at.
Still gets a six months. But as we know.
Right.
That goes far. Exactly. Exactly. I think it's great that Paul will reach out to Jack and get that ball rolling.
It sounded like Jack has helped with a number of other counties in the interview process or application process to hire a new county attorney, so hopefully we're lucky and find a good candidate and just have a smooth transition. Uh, the other thing I had, I was in Des Moines, an executive board meeting for ISAC last week. We had a full day. Quite the process of interviewing three candidates for the director position. There's actually two hundred and fifty-two applicants for a job. Automatically right off the bat, it was whittled down to two hundred and thirteen because a number of them did send in what was required to start with. So we did that out right away. And then we did have, uh, uh, we had a smaller subcommittee, you know, go through the initial process of, of getting it down to seven candidates that they interviewed. And then from there, they narrowed it to three. Then the full board. What I was there for was to interview and see what these three have, who was the best fit. And so we gave each candidate had an hour and a half throughout the day to be interviewed. We had the same set of questions. Barry Anderson is chairman. He did a very good job of keeping things on track and asked a lot of questions, but we were still able to ask, kind of, you know, as things popped up and we got to discuss some things. Individual questions as well. Later on that evening, we had a board dinner. Kind of more of a social event with the three and kind of see how they mingled and fit in and then how they just conducted themselves, which was pretty nice to see. Long story short, uh, ended up being, oh, came down to kind of two candidates. The all three were very, very talented. One that we just didn't see fit as well, he was in nonprofit, he actually had Wells Fargo in the corporate part of it. He was make a wish in some different, different communities like that, but just felt like didn't quite have the, the county government, the legislative perspective, the, you know, at the Capitol as well. And the other two was Christian Harstlager, intern at our legal counsel, Andrea Woodward. He's the greater Des Moines Lions. I mean, had lobbied in the past. And it was very, very close. I think both were very qualified, good, good candidates. I however, ended up that night, um, I sat down with Barry and Barry and I had a quite a long discussion on, on how the day went because I had to wait the next morning and they were gonna deliberate and vote on who they wanted to offer the job to because they had to wait for that funeral. So Barry took my comments and then he just voted for me as a proxy vote. And it came down to Christie and Andrea Woodward. And long story short, Andrea got the majority of the votes. So.
She accepted?
Barry said that she did. So we'll be moving forward with a new direction.
Her still stay down?
I hope so. I hope so.
I hope so. I mean, Christine's so talented and she's done a lot of really good things for ISAC. I mean, she's just so accessible with her legal counsel. I mean, you can call her up and she, if she don't answer right away, she does get back to you quickly. I didn't, you know, I, I think both will be good. I mean, Andrew is very talented. But it was very, I think it was, showed that we had a high level of quality, that it was so close. And said, now's the time, we made the decision, move forward and, and get behind the new director and move forward as to what ISAC can do and what, continue what they've been doing for us. Basically, making sure that they are on top of their game to be our voice.
Feel good when you're, when you're on a board or in that situation, you know that no matter which one we pick, we're gonna be okay. You know, that even if it's not the one that I wanted, you can see the, the quality of the individual and you know that they can each do the job. So.
It, it really, yeah, it was a tough decision. I think it really went back and forth and Barry kind of filled me in afterwards on how the next day went and he said, almost kind of got to the point where we had kind of keep things in line because it was just that back and forth on the decision. But, so we enter into a new era of ISAC.
Yeah, for sure.
For sure.
All right. How long was you there?
Oh, he started at.
Was it forty years?
Nineteen seventy-nine. I ended up, I brought that.
Forty-five years.
That, uh, membership that I found in Grandpa's file of nineteen seventy-seven ISAC membership, I brought that to the office and showed the board and then I um, gave it to Bill, who Bill wanted to hang in the office.
Oh, nice.
Somewhere, just as, you know, at least it's not tucked away in a closet that nobody ever gets to see it. At least at the office and likes the thing that they have it.
Nice. That's it.
That is all I got.
Still have fifteen minutes, so. Right. Craig said he had some time to fill.
Do you have anything else?
I don't think so. I have advisory mental health meeting tomorrow. Uh, I've had a ton of emails from Dawn about some changes. I was trying to kind of open those up today so I could read them. Can't load the file because there's so much to it. I'll continue to try to do that, so we're out of time.
So today's history lesson.
Okay. I can't look.
Is about the, uh, county home.
Oh.
So, uh, I found some of this information online, some of it just through, through research, but in the election of eighteen seventy-eight, the Board of Supervisors was authorized to purchase a county farm. In pursuant to this election, one hundred and sixty acres were purchased from D.R. Gillett at fifteen dollars per acre. In April nineteen oh five, the county courthouse was totally destroyed by fire. Uh, this necessitated the placing of county charges of the people in various institutions where they have been supported up to this time. This is an article from Phyllis Heller. Uh, the issue of constructing a new poor farm to replace the one that had been destroyed by fire was turned down by the voters in the November election. In nineteen ten, a proposition to dispose of part of the poor farm and issued bonds for twenty-five thousand dollars for the construction of a courthouse was submitted to. And issued bonds for twenty-five thousand dollars for the construction of a courthouse was submitted to the people and carried. The supervisors advertised the sale for March first nineteen ten at three o'clock at the courthouse. With W J McCarron crying the sale on the forefront steps of the courthouse. The legal description of the land at Dennis Township of the Southwest half, uh, section thirty-one, township eighty-three. Range thirty-nine and, um, except for one half an acre in the southeast corner of said land. Consisting of a total of one hundred and sixty-four and a half acres, subject to a nineteen eleven year lease. They're on the terms of sale to be one thousand dollars cash payment on date of sale, balance cash sixty days from the date of sale without interest. The county retained the half acre because this had been used as a cemetery. To bury paupers who had died at the poor farm and had no known relatives. And if you look at that legal inscription today, that's owned by Muff Corp and is exactly one hundred and sixty-four acres. Uh, the supervisors are now ready to contract a new building, a structure large enough to care for twenty-five inmates. Besides the manager's family, the estimated cost was twenty-five thousand dollars. The Board of Supervisors let the contract for the, uh, building of the new county home and barn. To the Wiley Brothers of Chicago for fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The plumbing and gas lighting was contracted separately. The new county home was built on land already owned by the county, so now they already own that land. Which is located directly north across the Bouilla River from the location of the old county home. The location of the old county home was flooded often by the river water. And this probably influenced the supervisors to sell the original property and build on higher ground since the county had the land anyway. And then this was, uh, in the Crawford County History Book that was written by Anna Schneller. Um, the county home locally called the Poor Farm was destroyed by fire about three o'clock on Sunday morning, April second nineteen oh five. One man, an old fellow named Perry Wilson, was burned in the building. The county home is located one mile east of area on the Bouilla River bottom. Was a large frame structure of many rooms. There were no conveniences such as a county facility should. There were fourteen in the home and it was managed by Mr. and Mrs. Marion Cole. A good part of the furniture was saved. The house was a total loss. There was sixteen hundred dollars insurance on the building. The loss to the county was near thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the state board of control had condemned the old courthouse as inadequate. The supervisors disposed of the inmates by sending the three, I'm thinking this was their last name, Wildman Women. To the Glenwood State Asylum, the Anderson woman to the hospital. Four others to Shelby County and three to Sack County. One old man was left to house and he was offered a home by relatives a short time later. Marion and Cole was paid two hundred and fifty dollars for the work he had done since the beginning of the year. The supervisors rented the land to another farmer who'd go ahead with the crops for the year. There was speculation that the fire had been set. A suspect was arrested. Russell Gifford was judged insane and Sheriff Meehan took him back to Oregon where he had company.
Wow, oh my.
So, uh, and the, the other thing that was in nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, supervisors approved, uh, improvements at the county home for the amount of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars. And then in nineteen ninety-five, they sold the county home for a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
What they sell it to at that time, do you know?
I do. No. Was someone, actually, I want to know the stories. Actually. It was purchased by an individual who passed away in twenty twenty-two because I Googled his name and it came up because him and his. He was married for a second time and him and his wife, they both signed prenups and then they decided to change their prenups. While they were married and, um, when he passed away, then. There was a lawsuit between the wife. And his son from his first marriage.
Oh my.
That went all the way to the Iowa Supreme Court and was just, um, resolved in May of this year.
Oh my god.
I. So, uh, it's so, it could be D E W David Roberts.
David Roberts.
That's what you're doing tonight.
Oh.
If he hasn't, when he died, I mean, in the court documents, the state was worth over fifteen million dollars. He owned a lot of property in Western Iowa.
Really?
But, uh, because I, since my son is in the state attorney, when I took that, when I. They had the, the ruling and what the Supreme Court all said and I would send a PDF also, I'd send it to him. I said, hey, you might come across a situation like this. He got back and he said, oh dad, that's perfect. Just what I needed. Working on something. That I still have an opening for a researcher at my law.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I just thought it interested about county homes sometimes we don't.
I'm glad you brought that up because it jarred my memory that I was approached by an individual wanting to know if they would sell a small portion of their county farm off. To make their farming practices in these years. Did I bring it by the board? So I really don't know if we have any interest of selling at this time. At least only acres. He just needed a better access out of his field. So it'd be a very small, very small amount.
Would it help access for that parcel? No matter who owns it or I.
Yeah, I'm guessing, because I'm not opposed, I guess, if it's helping access for portions. I did tell him, I said, no matter what, if we do decide. It's gotta be a certain way we dispose, so even though. It won't be just a slip some cash on top of the table type thing. I mean, it's gotta be disposed of. Public, publicly, public hearing, no matter what, it might end up costing you more than you would ever imagine. Or might get less than I imagined. Just be prepared if we do decide we want to move forward for that, so.
I feel okay looking at it.
I'll look at it.
Is there any way that you could just? Put in a cover for a new, like an access and easement? Without having to. Too much of.
Might have just meet with the gentleman and go out there and show him, have him show us what his thoughts are. But apparently. It's one of those deals that they're gonna get by will be all these years. Alright.
Yeah.
On a different note, I was thinking about that with the rain on, the wetter conditions we've had this year. How do you feel like our new? FM frequency water machine downstairs is working, as Dave said.
I do.
You know, now, so I mean, put it in.
Yes, yeah.
And this is a wet year, it's supposed to drive the moisture out of our foundation. Just curious, we feel like.
I don't.
No, it was working right after it wasn't sold because I think they had some pests, but I think you make a good point. So we can get moisture we've had here. As you can see, it's still. Um, working. Or if any of that moisture levels has gone up at all.
I don't know.
Yeah, we bought a machine that, there's actually two of them. It looks like a big globe. And puts off an FM, an FM frequency and is supposed to drive the moisture out of the foundation of our building. Help maintain our foundation.
This is the time that the. Did we want to talk about these? That's a little bit of time, the change of wages.
We can.
Well, what do you guys think about all of them?
I mean, I guess in my mind, they're just a formality. I mean, we approved the budget, right?
Yeah.
Now it's the department heads saying, here's what we're gonna base.
Uh, Tori, that's the, the, what's in our budget, maybe we may got a three or so, but I mean, I don't know what. What we can. Do to do. Other than control our budget.
We didn't do, we, uh, must have left quite a bit on the table with some of those that they.
That just goes to show, we need to maybe.
Eight thousand dollars a year for. Employees.
Oh, we had that conversation last year.
When we were doing the budget, we had that conversation.
We did.
So, and I'm with you, Craig. At this point, we already certified and.
You appropriate budgets today.
Say that again.
You appropriate.
Notice terminology wise, what is appropriate that we think.
We issue.
Money that we levied for in their department's budget. So it takes the money we collect and now shoves it into.
We have to give them all their.
Nope, no, you don't.
No, we don't.
That's not.
Just, you know, a little history lesson. We've tried this several times, not several, a couple times in the past.
We try different angles.
Tried different angles and it seems to be a more of a. Make.
If ultimately you're gonna give it to them.
There's no sense.
Just give it to them.
Yeah, right.
But if you're gonna be appropriate and. Stick to that.
Let's come and do that.
Come December first, they'll be.
They'll be in here.
They'll be in here.
That would be out there because they.
Yeah, have a public hearing.
We can't.
Oh, yeah, well.
No, you don't.
No.
I would have to be, uh.
Just take. The time for us to continue to leave, after going down many different roads, is next year again when we budget. Continue to. Both your old fine tooth comb.
But do it, we get better, I thought, this year.
I do.
As far as going through the budget.
We, I thought we had it, uh, every, everything that we could do, you know, we try not to do, it's not. Give our department heads and our, like John, they shall say have money to actually run their, uh, departments and that's, that's not something we want to do.
And to a point, it is on them.
But if that money.
We went through a fine tooth comb.
We did twice.
To try to be as efficient as we possibly could. And how they run their budget after that is on them.
You know, I think the conversation, like that. When they run out of money. They'll come to.
Don't come.
They'll have to.
And that's what, that was our attempt only to budget this year and we went through, we thought we cut it down to the most efficient. We could, that they could still operate.
Right.
And if they did something drastic and had to come to us, it was on them.
Far short of going back and figuring out how we had a bottom line that we felt was feasible and then raise a sort of. More than what we anticipated or more than what was presented.
And Craig, I'm with you. I, I really do feel it. We did go through it. We looked at line item by line item of what had been used, not had been used. And we cleaned up a lot of those line items that hadn't been used in a few years.
And they all complained about it.
I'll even give Roger credit, you know, he came back in and sat down with us and, hey, guys, here's what I, you know, it worked with what I need, what, what can we, yep. Not have.
I guess complaint isn't the right word.
It's pretty close.
Expressed or considered over the. Over the cuts that we were trying to have to go, but they had brought it.
Like some of them though, and I wouldn't. Some of them were not actually cutting, but just looking at numbers. They perceived it as a cut, you know, you have to explain it, you know, it's like. I'll. We'll have to say I'll play it out. So when you mentioned the deappropriation, then you said they came back in December. Why would it be December?
They're about the kind, historically, when we've done it, the only appropriately, like eighty-five percent. Per department. Those things like that's about the kind they start. Inserting. Why?
We talked to Paul and that, make sure that's all that.
Because some of them pay. A lot of their maybe expenses are beginning.
Get to that.
Oh, did he retire like last week?
Couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so we got that personnel, which is. So Paul will be here and. Take action on the. Three minutes. Turn the big changes to the handbook forward, do you think was our biggest change?
I mean, uh, don't look at, I didn't grab mine.
Okay. My understanding.
Instantly, I realized I was late and I ran.
So I know one of them was the changing of the hundred dollar requirement to have to work in order to get to. I think it just updated his language.
Yeah.
Because without having them side by side, it would be hard for us to, with all the.
Right, I think, yeah.
But after working on it, uh, it boiled down to about three changes, right?
Pretty big ones, probably. There were some small language differences. When Amy comes in, she'll help talk about that.
Wait for that and stop.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone?
Good. With your vacation? I bet yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ludendorff, great, great, true, the Ludendorff, yes, I'm sorry, there's a. Yeah, they couldn't blow it up. It was built too.
Not too good.
Yeah, so. A lot of history over there. It's beautiful, beautiful areas. So, um. Yeah, I was having an update on some things here, uh. The bridge on E sixteen Dixon started that, but I got a text from Seth Dixon this morning. And of course, a lot of their employees themselves are impacted by the flooding that we're seeing up in part of the state, so. He said it'll be a while before they get back, you know, a few days, several days. I don't really know, but everybody's just trying to deal with all this. The flood devastation that they're experiencing, so. You gotta kind of respect that.
All my sister text me a little bit ago and said that they're having brownouts in our part of the county.
Yeah.
The guy has to do a substation's rain shut down.
It could be. I mean, this is impacting all sorts of major utilities. It's impacting rail, uh. You know, LG Everest, they got a letter from them or an email yesterday that. You know, their, their rails are being compromised. They're not using bats. They're adding. Sixteen dollar fifty cent surcharge on rock at one location, like a nine dollar one to another location. And it's not their fault. The, the rail's much less expensive than putting it on a truck and so, um, so those are the issues that come to rise when you need rip rapp. Now, you know, when you have these flooding events, you try and. See, but the water's gotta get down before they can do anything and assess the damage. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty serious stuff for a lot of those people out there. You feel sorry for them, homes, businesses, you know, infrastructure, it's all being impacted and still we're. We're pretty fortunate right now.
So I suppose that big Sioux Bridge, real bridge that I supplied LG Everest.
See, they rail everything from Dell Rapids down to Sioux City.
Probably the great bridge.
Yeah.
There's no longer. Have you heard it's connected to Marietta, there in Fort Dodge?
Uh, I haven't heard anything from them yet. Uh, that's a little further east, you know, it's a different basin, so I think anything that drains to the west is where. There are a lot of issues that are coming to rise, so. Yeah. So. Uh, Amptons pits underwater, so five thousand tons that we left over there to haul out later this summer, they sit there for a while.
But they, I never think I, I can't remember still sitting there.
Yeah, yeah. It's a bad deal, you know, and a lot of people aren't covered for flood insurance like this.
Unless you're in a flood.
It's, it's a problem.
It's a problem.
It's a huge, huge financial hit for a lot of people. So counter blessings, I guess. Uh, so Dixon, they've started the project, but they're kind of on hold temporarily. Uh, the Manila shop, uh, I haven't been down there, uh, for a while, but it sounds like there's just minor items that they're wrapping up and then. Texted Adam this morning. It sounds like they're gonna move in the week of the eighth, so, you know, took votes, two different votes, so they were low. So once we, we get that done, that project should be pretty well wrapped up in a shop and.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah, it, it does. We get it all kind of manicured and everything right where it's supposed to be. It's.
We're win-win. I, Nella's gotta be happy with getting to our old job.
I would think so, and it's just a nice addition to the, to the area there, so turned out pretty good.
Very nice.
Uh, roadside crew basically spraying, um. You know, two years ago, I gave Verdine the option. I said, do you want a different tractor, mower tractor, a different spray truck? Oh, we need to get a different. Mower tractor, but spray truck's twenty-three, twenty-four years old and it's starting to show its age, so. That'll probably be in the budget for next year to, to get that replaced, you know, and any of either agriculture know that if you've got something, this spray equipment is twenty-four years old. Yeah, you can't get parts for it anymore. Just they don't, they don't service it, so. We'll get by this year, but it'll be something to be thinking about for the next budget year, so. Uh, then they're gonna start mowing, you know, before the Fourth of July holiday, is everything mowed up, so. Uh, item six will pass over until we get to the public hearing. Uh, the cat tour, I, I know unfortunately that's timing isn't gonna work out well for everybody, uh, I don't know unless they should put it off till. Later in the fall or maybe next year.
I think like we told Ben last week, it's just. Schedule it and take.
Yeah.
Your hourly.
Take a few of the guys, yeah.
You would take.
Yeah.
Or maybe take a couple extra if we.
Yeah.
Think it'd be beneficial for them, I mean.
Oh, it's always good for those guys to go see that stuff, yeah.
They work hard year round?
Yeah.
They're gonna hear me more.
Yeah.
I mean, they might get more out of it than.
Sure.
I per se would.
Yeah.
I wouldn't delay it because it doesn't fit into supervisor's time.
Okay, we'll move forward with it. Yeah, okay, sounds good. Uh, gravel haul, fantastic. Uh, they had some record days, the last few days of number of trucks. I think it was two hundred and thirty loads in a day. Which is way over what we've ever done, but they started up north and they're at that northeast corner of the county and working this way. You know, that's a five, six thousand ton day you've never had. So we've got good truckers and, and you know, Tony Deter and Barry Jurgensen always come back and help us out. They've been around forever and those guys are really. That helps make it all go smooth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but if we keep up this pace, we'll be done here in a few weeks, a couple of weeks probably to gravel haul, so. Well, going good.
I might just work it out. By the time the order goes down, maybe we'll be getting all gravel and then the guys can go roll in the flood refresh.
Yeah, they're gonna need a lot of it, so. Uh, dust control, we, you know, we, before I left, I met with, uh, Ben and I met with the DOT staff, uh, on the, uh, best, uh. And, uh. So these were the agreed to locations that they're gonna apply before the project starts, so if we can kind of, I don't know, if any of you were here. When they did the whole replacement by Little Red Schoolhouse, uh, the traffic shot all over our gravel roads and it was a real problem. So, uh, so these are, like I said, they agreed to, and we don't know where everyone's gonna go, so this could be changed as the closure takes place. Uh, they're talking six to eight weeks. So hopefully that's, that's how it'll play out, but, uh, but anyhow, just trying to get out of the curve a little bit. And anticipate that some of these people are gonna use routes other than the official nature.
The DOT agreed to cover the costs and dust control.
Yeah, they're paying for it. We'll pay for it and they'll reimburse us. So we just keep track of everything. When the project's done, we just submit a request for reimbursement and they pay us.
Well, I think you, with past history, you have a pretty good idea where dust control needs to go.
Yeah, it's a good start. So, thank you for some of the hot spots.
I guess on that note. Then based on last week, Dave Bachmann reached out, maybe with one of the residents on the side street in Dow City.
Okay, yeah.
I was wondering if they could, I still, that's kind of the city's responsibility to, up their sides to keep traffic, if they don't want traffic going. The heavy truck traffic going down that street is really not ours responsibility. Could you reach out to, uh, Cody? I think he's the mayor now, Larry Meyer.
In Dow City?
Yeah.
Oh, so Landonburg is.
He works for the city now.
Oh, Landon, oh, okay.
He's the city, city guy now.
Yeah, I had Kirk Johnson get ahold of Dow City, you know, he's the guy, I give you his contact. He's, he's the DOT kind of project manager, very nice. And I said, you know, visit with Dow City, so really that's all I'm gonna do is put those two together because that's really not even, you know.
Really, I'm sorry.
If it's kind, if it's one of their streets, I don't wanna get involved.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So it's out of our.
Jurisdiction.
It's out of our lane.
Yeah, yeah.
I did express that. I'm sorry, I forget the gentleman's name, but I had spoken also, I spoke at Chinoff's with duty and expressed that gentleman's concern. I'll treat the turning up and go here if that. And, uh, he said if it becomes a problem, they'll figure out some additional signage and.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect. Uh, and then advertising for new engineer, I did visit with Dave and Kyle a little bit this morning, but, uh, before I had gone. Here, I had talked to Jack Reed and just, you know, suggested he maybe reach out, talk to the board, see if he wanted to have the assistance. Sounds like. He's willing to do that as part of his, um, retainer, uh, for no additional charge, so I'll work with him on, on developing kind of a position description slash advertisement. And get working on that, you know, the, the, the logical places are on the ISAG webpage. And County Engineer Service Bureau, I've been telling people that, you know, there'll be an opening, uh, hopefully, you know, if you meet some other supervisors or if you know somebody. Grew up in the county, uh, you know, that, uh, that's the ideal situation. You can find someone who really wants to be here, uh, in the area, that's, you know. Uh, paths are connected, so.
We already got Jack as a consultant, part of the services.
Yeah.
You know, we're not out spending a lot of money on a headhunter right now.
Right.
Utilize this first and go from there.
So I'll work with him and then have him, you know, kind of report to you guys kind of how he's moving forward with that, like starting getting the, the advertisement ready. And then, uh, you know, my recommendation would be try to get somebody in here early January so that you can have a little bit of transition. And I'm not going anywhere, so even after that March timeframe, I'll still be here to help out as needed, you know, so. That's kind of where that'll be at.
Paul, when you came on after Dale White, did Dale kind of transition?
We went out and drove for half a day.
Really?
But I had worked in the area. I worked for Suncoast Engineering and was a consultant. I did all the bridge inspections here as a consultant for them, so I was familiar with the county, had done a lot of design work and then Chuck was here. So I had a really, you know, stable transition there and it worked out really well. Uh, and we've got a great staff as well, um, you know, that, that will help. There's a good foundational knowledge there that will be here for whoever takes over, so. So I think it should hopefully go smooth. So, uh, the shop air conditioner is much appreciated.
Yeah.
I was in it Friday.
Today. It's nice. Those guys are, is law, is law. So, you know, it's just the main portion of the shop, not the bridge portion, but, um, you know. It's just something that they really do appreciate, so. Uh, the new case crawler, uh, was delivered last week. That's on the job on, uh, Inn Avenue where the guys are, uh, are working right now, so did kind of skip over that. The, uh, great crews working on U Avenue. It's just south of, of, uh, yeah, it's in here off of fifty-nine by Bon Church is there. You go with, uh, East right there, then we're coming graded there. And then, uh, the bridge crew is, uh, finished up the bridge in West Side Ave. Which I haven't been over there to see the finished product, but it's a very nice bridge. Uh, and to their credit, we, you know, we hired a crane. It's expensive to bring a crane in and set the center sections. But they figured out how to set those approach bands without having to bring a crane back, so. It's pretty, pretty impressive.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah, so good, good bunch there. It's a really nice bridge. Uh, so that bridge, there's no one ever gonna have to worry about that for lifetimes. It's a nice bridge. Turned out really well. Um, but, uh, the new case crawlers, they moved to Inn Avenue between three twentieth and three thirtieth and we're taking a bridge out there and we're gonna put a structural plate. So there'll be, uh, start on that right now. Friday, the Hundred Canyons, uh, meeting over at Charter Oak. For those that are interested, it'll be a tour and, um.
We can, we have double. Right, we got a meeting here at eleven seven. I skipped the tour and just go for lunch.
Okay.
Yeah.
I might be, I'm sorry. Yeah, Staley's Chicken.
So we just pay for lunch when we get there?
Yeah, yeah, it's ten dollars, ten dollars. Um, you know, I think they kind of like to get somewhat of a head count, but. But just, you know, maybe let them know and I'll, I'll tell them there might be more. Four or five extra for Crawford County coming to the meeting, so, um, so for lunch anyhow. Um, but he always does a real nice job with tours and stuff, so. Anyhow, uh.
Yeah, I got nine fifty-nine.
Just about to.
Yep, so we're real close to, uh, seven up, we're hearing.
It's real quick. School Street. Coming in.
South of Dow City. Rough.
No. Speed limit sign or whatever. I don't know if that's. I won't, we bring that up some other time. We'll talk about it if we.
There's a traffic.
Try to get them slowed down. I, Cody reached out to me last week in regards to that, but he can go a little bit into.
All right, so it's now ten AM. Uh, we have a couple of various.
And burns, he's calling her earlier. Carol Tyne.
Oh.
Reclassification of a portion of K Avenue beginning at, uh, twenty-seven twelve K Avenue and running against, uh, southeast progress. B to the end of K Avenue is established by petition number five five eight, said Roman generally lying in the northwest quarter, northwest quarter. Of section twenty-five T eight four N on thirty-four W. Hi.
There.
Yeah. I'm making motion to open the public hearing.
All right, we are officially in a public hearing. Yes, a little warm in here. Start with that. Sorry. We, we closed the door, but then the circulation is. Only if there gets to be some, uh.
Voice factor.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm good, you?
Good.
We have a, uh.
Could be good.
Motion and a second. All in favor of a public hearing.
Aye, aye.
They post the signs. We are now officially in a public hearing. All right. Did we have any written objections, Madam Auditor? And write oral objections, correct? So we're here to have a public hearing. Does anyone have objections to, uh, reclassifying? Sure, that's fine.
So, uh, just to kind of track this through, through time, um. So prior to, to me coming on as county engineer in two thousand. There were no official level B, level C designations of any of the roads in Grover County. They were just all area service roads. And I think, uh, kind of on a, maybe on a statewide basis, I'm not really sure, but, uh. There was a push to officially designate certain classifications and there's the three classifications are, uh, area service A, B, and C. And, and I think it came down to liability, uh, and so what we did was, and starting about two thousand and two. We started officially designating large groups of roadways as level B. And, you know, we did, well, the map that you see here has all red, you know, and kind of reddish, pinkish lines on it. Those were all officially designated then, in that two thousand and two, two thousand and three timeframe as level B roads. And this particular road was kind of found at that same time, Rain Elizabeth Fork and her husband had bought a farm. Uh, and they wanted to restrict access and so the area service road was one of the first, I believe, that we designated as area service C road. Uh, and it was petition for any of the people that are sitting here, sign that petition, this didn't Charleston, this didn't work. They petitioned to have that designated as level C road. And so that took place and it's basically when it, if it all gets down, you know. To it, the difference between a level B and a level C was restricted access. The level C designation came about because people didn't want undesirable things happening on the roadway and it was just one way to restrict. Kids going there, partying and, you know, those types of things. So there are certain cases where it just seemed that it made sense. And at that particular time, it, it, it did make sense and so the board took action and they designated it as level C and then the gates were put up. But as far as, uh, maintenance on the roadways, there really is no difference other than most of the time you don't do any maintenance on level C roads. You know, maybe a little tree trimming here and there, uh, but very little to no maintenance unless someone requested. Um, Elizabeth also asked that she be allowed to put staggered on the roadway. And we allowed that because there was no agreement, there's no written agreement between the county and, and her at the time about that. Uh, we, we had a grant, a sort of scene agreement, so I love B roads, okay? Uh, where the county may participate or, you know, there's kind of a cost share range, but this particular case, she just said, well, I just wanna put some material on there. Do you care if we do it? So it's like, you know, if you're doing it here, boss, it's fine. So, so that's kind of the history and so then, uh, you know, we moved the best board here to today. And, you know, and all the Casey kind of, uh, take it from here, that, you know, things have changed, so.
Me? So, the area he's talking about originally, um, it was mostly for egg use, um, I think they had it shed back there, but no one lived back there. Well, my plan now. Currently I'm in the process of building a home back there. Um, so my concern is, you know, with gates. If you have an emergency or anything like that, something shut, um, deliveries, anything like that. I know this winter when the gates were shut, we had a big snow. And I couldn't even get the gates open because they were drifted shut. It took a lot of work to get them open, so that's kind of my concern is mostly safety and. Honestly, who wants a gate at the end of the road? Um. So that's kind of just my concern on it. The only maintenance wise, like Paul said, I can handle that. I would maybe ask for a little rock on the road to my place now since I am living back there, but. Other than that, it's not asking too much, really, just that.
When do you, uh, plan to start the construction?
It has started.
It has started?
Yeah, yeah. They, uh, the walls are in, the plumbing's in, so now the flooring, so yeah, the process has started.
Okay, I've been back.
Yeah, yeah.
So currently these gates are shut all the time?
No.
No.
I've taught, they were being shut all the time. I would open them and they would get shut, um, so I decided to, to talk to these guys and see if we could keep them open, but. There again, if you're gonna have the gates open all the time, why do we need gates?
Oh, there's one good reason why you need a gate and that's called liability in the form of if somebody goes back there and decides to. Park or whatever, um, that's also a difference in this where the roads say one has trespass on it. I can restrict, I can go back there and say, I'm gonna call somebody to come out here and get you off of the road. Be, be level B, you can't do that. And we know that because two seventy-third street just got closed and that was one of the problems that we had. Um, a lot of people would go back there, a lot of people, and like my brother said, we can't go back there and tell them to get off, it's a public road. Is that problem persisting? I, uh, like on a, is it a certain time of the year that it's worse that people are back there? I know one, one time people were back there, like start little fires maybe and, uh. On just seventy-third. Yeah, okay, okay.
And that's, you know, if I'm living there.
Right.
Traveling up and down this road, I, I feel it will be less, you know, it's. Be a little different if it's, uh, Paul had it, would go back there occasionally, but not as much as someone that's.
Yeah, there's activity back there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have you noticed an increase in the, the traveling of the road then, or is it, you know, as far as, uh? There's a lot of trucks going back there right now.
Probably from.
That's probably for obvious reasons. Yeah, I, I, I understand that, so. I, I would like, Beth and Dean knew what it was like prior to the C road status way before, um, we moved out there. We didn't have a lot of traffic up there because there, the road ended at our driveway. That was it. If people were coming up there, I mean, you, okay, we get somebody to come up and it was like, oh, that's the end of the road, so they turned around in their driveway, which is not a problem.
Is there a not through road sign there then, or, you know what I'm saying?
There's nothing at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
It's just if you can get up to the top of the hill, it's a.
Yeah.
It's a level C.
So maybe that's something we can think about too.
Yeah.
Some type of signage to sure, find that there's nothing to get out there, dead end road or.
That's not specified on your B versus C level roads. That's not specified on your signage, cause Deena said that.
No, I mean, we could erect a not through road sign, you know, and, and then, I mean, that's not that big.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's something that would be. That's, that's something that would be.
Because you're gonna have to have new signage if you move it to B status, say B level status versus what that sign says right now on the gate.
We could do like not through road gravel in his head, bottom and that way, well.
Might even.
That might just, that might deter people because it's stable gravel ends ahead, you know, and it gets top.
That's what I'm saying, it might even be better to put a sign below and they won't even try to get up to Dean's.
So they won't even go up to there.
Yeah.
Because I have a lot of people come up to our lane, turn around, like she was saying, prior to that.
Yeah.
The, the gate to date until we left it open once there was so much activity, to date, that gate deterred the traffic. Very.
Nobody wants to get out and open up a gate.
Right, and not this day and age, it's lazy.
So that makes sense, but I do believe, you know, somebody just outside seeing, wondering where it takes you, if it says not through road. You know, you're gonna run into a dead end, so why go up there, especially now that there's going to be three houses on that road? And the deterrent's gonna be to get up there and they see somebody lives there, so there can't be a big party going on, because there's a home there now.
Yeah, I would say it might deter the party situation, but not the errant mushroom hunter that likes to go back there and stare in your trail cams and.
Yeah, my family on. Level C, they'd live right off and they still get that, I, I don't, you're gonna always have people that shouldn't be doing what they're doing.
Yeah, trespassers will be trespassers.
Yeah.
I do believe that a home back there will stop the real derelict folks that would go back there and think it was a safe place to do things.
When people went back there when the gate was left open.
Yeah.
I mean, because obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know. Paul is gonna have people go back there and farm his land, they're gonna go back there, leave the gate open, be back there working a long time, the gate is left open.
Yeah.
Especially in spring.
Yeah.
But then that goes back to my argument of why have the gates if you're gonna leave them open?
And I think the sign is a good place to start to, uh, stop people from just wondering what's back there and then, uh. Getting into mischief, don't you, or do you read the sign and then a house will change kind of the dynamics of that, uh, level C road? You ready?
Um, after what happened to me on Christmas Day, no. I mean, on Christmas Day, I have somebody in my lane trying to drive back there at four o'clock in the morning. And I had to call the cops, I don't know where they would have gone if they, if there went to been a gate. That's, that's on his truth, they run their lane, they, he was on mine, um, it was crazy.
Can I ask?
We're not, we're not trying to keep Casey out.
No.
Thirty one hundred percent, putting the gates open. The only thing we're trying to do is put no trespassing, passing signs for the C road. But where the gate is now, the gates will stay a hundred percent open. So, and I'm just trying to piece all this together, trying to, so we can't get my. Well, the G I S map.
That, that was working.
Property lines that are. Cause if we would have banned the road at a certain spot to where. Cause I'm just trying to get this.
It's the only way to get to that, partially, because.
I'm just trying to figure out, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, cause he, the road cuts through your property to get to his property, yeah. Road is actually all, all a part of it, I mean, but, okay, that's what I wanna know. Were it turned to a C, if it was all on your property, we could just basically abandon the road and it'd be on you, but we can't do that.
Oh, no.
Alright.
Yeah, so there's, you know, it's always the compromise of how to make sure that, and I think that your main intent is to make sure that the people that don't belong up there. Don't go up there at four o'clock.
Yeah, I'll know how many times I, I've texted him and said something, just tell him that.
Unfortunately, I have people driving on my yard in the morning too, but I don't know why they're there, but then, so.
Yeah.
I will never be able to. Stop all of that.
Yeah.
I do believe him building a house back there will.
Yeah.
Hopefully deter that, well, deter, deter the shenanigans probably.
And that, the shenanigans, I think.
But if people are still gonna, potentially could. Drive down there because their GPS says, hey. Yeah, we got a E sixteen, so probably how many people got stuck on that dirt road.
If anybody drives down this one, they're, they're really exploring, I mean, if you go out there and look at it, it's.
Where you can go up and down. I think that's, that's gonna turn some people around.
That's just my question, would I be liable for rocking that then, or?
We would have to come with an agreement for this past.
Yeah, I think it's still a level B road and where, where, you know.
Cause I know they brought, I've seen the county rock roads that are level B roads, so that's just my question.
And, and we're, we're doing that on new, newly graded roads where, uh, we're trying to do it for erosion control purposes. And, and so those are the only ones.
And those don't have a residency on them.
No, if we, if, if we've had one where a person's requested the upgrade, of course, then they have to upgrade it, so you can do so.
Yeah, and that's something I would work out with the county, I can, it'd be a tough place to get a truck back in there, so I understand that I don't have a problem moving the snow and. Doing those things, but it's a, it's a different situation.
It is a little.
Yeah.
Dean was gonna say something.
Sorry. Within building a house there, it's very visible, it creeps interest on people and they wanna go see. And, and it's, it's very visible and everything, and the gates are there as a deterrent for that. And I will predict that while you're under construction and before you live there, you will put gates at the edge of your property.
I already have gates there.
You already gave it, okay, I didn't go.
There's, Paul's gates are there, if I need to close it, I can, but that's my property, not the county.
That's what I'm saying, he, I, I think you will do that.
But that doesn't deter him for us.
Yeah, and so the gates that are there now protect the backside of our property. From, uh, nocturnal activity getting around the backside of our houses. Now, I don't know how we do it, I don't expect him to, uh, open closed gates when he lives there. However, during this act, this construction activity, to get his people in and out of there, I understand that. But it's gonna, it's, it's gonna take an effort. To, to protect us. And then along with it, you talk about the, a sign of, uh, gravel ends, whatever, I don't think that's strong enough working. I, I don't, I, I'm struggle with much of the recommendation that something needs to be stronger than this ad.
But I think if you say dead end, you know. Yeah, that may, that may keep the interest, well, what's up there, it's dead end, others may not get to say, dead end gravel, it's head, we're not going up there.
Yeah, so what's, what's a lot? Like, that's what, we're all saying a lot of people come up there, is it once a week, once a year, once a month, what's a lot?
One time is enough.
I, I gotta be able to believe this.
Casey, one time is enough if it ruins anything you have.
Well, that could happen on any of your property.
Well, I'm not gonna disagree with that, but I have the liability, I, I have the ability to go to them and say, out, you have no right here.
They could come off your gravel road and access your ground, what are you gonna do on that end of your property?
Um, everything is. We have signage there, we're gonna have to put signage.
You can sign, put signage off this road that's some trespassing on your ground, and as soon as somebody steps on your ground, you have the authority of the world to do what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah.
In the fifteen years that I own the farm. I had two incidents where someone did something, somebody came in, I think from, uh, South Beth Guire's, came through the A P V. I think they came through your house there, uh, it's hard to stop.
The other one was you had a lady go back there in a car.
That's what I was gonna say, the second one was, the gates were open in the spring of the year, who was step up there. And someone had been, was clearly impaired, uh, ended up wandering around out there. So those are really.
And no one lived.
The only two times that I had personally any issue there. But there were gates the whole time and, and I always appreciate you watching things, I know. Uh, but I can't speak to how many times these people had issues, but that's, that's what I experienced in fifteen years.
Well, I can speak to that, I mean, we have a lot of photos of, of people that are, they have to come from that arena to get back there. Because we have trail cams all over the property, how many do you have out there at night? But, you know, I come from far back, I'm nine a lot, I don't feel like I have my privacy out there, but in this day and age, you have to do that. Can I ask you one quick question, Casey? You mentioned the day you, you went back there and you purchased the property, you mentioned something about a remote gate.
That was something me and Paul talked about, but that would be at my cost, you know what I mean, that's. Something I don't, I'll follow too, you know what I mean? But like I said, going back to my concerns, I know the gates are told they'll be left open, but what if they do get shut and there's an emergency? Who's gonna take the liability to that? What if there's a fire and the gate shut? What if there's somewhere an ambulance has to get back there, what if my male needs to get back there? Um.
Those are gates chained?
They can be chained, they were, they were always chained.
They've been chained and padlocked in the past?
They have in the past, yeah.
Who has access to padlock?
We all do, I believe, right?
Whoever else Paul gave keys to.
Change the lock, maybe?
The lock's not there anymore.
That lies the problem, where you change it to a level B, we can't get it.
Right, that's the difference.
And even if Casey was to put up a remote gate, I mean, that would try to, wouldn't stand up, otherwise it's at your property.
Yeah.
That would stand up and.
Which I could do, you know, if I need to put a gate there, I could put a gate there, just like they could put a gate.
We can't pass you a putting a.
Yeah.
Gate and closing a level B road off.
Yes.
But if he puts it at the end of his property, it's exactly what Dean brought up. That, that doesn't protect ours in any way, shape, or form from anybody that decides to go back there, and he's the one that wants this. But we're, we're against it, they're in mind of a problem.
Yeah, but it's no different than, that's my argument, is it's no different than any other road. The fences are where the boundary line is, correct? On a level B road, so that road is a public road.
That's our good level, that we're faced with.
Yeah, I just don't want gates there, cause I'm gonna live back there and I don't feel that there needs to be gates there anymore, that's where I'll end it. And the only other request I have is maybe a little rock, other than that, I'm pretty easy to get along with. I don't need much, I can take care of the snow, I can take care of the, there's any mowing you did need, I, I would handle it, so.
The county rock B roads?
We have done so. Uh, especially once we created, just recently, we put, uh, gravel on there to maintain, to keep it from.
Originally.
Uh, we, we've done some. Just, just looking finished, and then there's some instances where a, a level B road comes down to an intersecting gravel road. And so for the first several hundred feet, we'll, we'll gravel that, uh, you know, so we have done so.
Originally, when I talked to you, you said Casey was gonna leave the trees and they were just.
Yeah.
Okay, he was gonna put gravel on.
That's exactly, that's exactly what we talked about, yeah.
Yep, and then, you know, you live there and there's gates, it was something I just didn't feel was needed.
Yeah, we've, we've also had people, uh, where they have agreements, I, it's on a level B road, and we've done agreements with them. You know, if they have a cattle feed plot or something and, and they go out there and give it gravel, so they have better access, we've done some agreements where we may be cautious with them. So there's a number of different varieties, agreements we have, situations that we have, we do level B roads.
I'll share with you, we had other adjacent landowners or just?
Though the county have that particular person, like we have one where they have two grain bins, it's a quarter mile up the hill and they wanted to grow out.
We're talking a few little rockets, not.
There's another one where, uh, you know, Marshall Chapman had a grain bin he needed to get to. And so we, you know, we try to work with people if they have valid reason to get to that location and do some sort of an agreement.
Casey brought up a good point, but he was, he asked about how often do we get traffic back there? And that's a good question, Casey. To me, what I see is it comes and goes in spurts.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I would say we're gonna get an increase around the holidays here, fourth of July, people are gonna be out and about and around.
Mm-hmm.
So. Your contractors will not be back there working, so could we get an agreement to close the gates over the holidays? During construction?
During construction, you wanna do it?
Over the holidays.
I mean. That's where it's like, eventually, if I don't have a, a gate there, what are we gonna do then? You see what I'm saying?
We're just trying to get through this time period, okay? Right?
And then when I'm living there, you're okay with the gates being removed, or what are you saying?
Well, we'll have to see how those works are, you know.
I don't want to say that, I don't want that.
It's, it's a tough one, cause change is always hard, you know, and. On this particular scenario, there is a change, that there's gonna be this property up there where there is a change happening, so. What was okay, you know, ten years ago, now there's a change, there's a property that's gonna be up there to deter. People from just going up there and horsing around, which has been the concern all along, is these people, they're just out. Having some fun to see this road that looks like, you know, challenged to get up and, uh, the gate has stopped them, but. Or slowed them down, but not stopped them necessarily, if I understand.
It does stop them, it really does.
It does, okay.
Well, I, I would hope a lot would, but that's what I'm getting back to is.
Yeah.
I understand their concern, but now I'm living back there, that's where it changed, where you're bringing it up.
That's, that's, I'm trying to figure out.
When do you hope to be living there, when do you hope?
Um, yeah, I, you know, I'll build them a house, it's always trying to get contractors in, but five, six months, it should be pretty close. And I, I drive back there, they probably know I drive back there and check on things quite often, so.
What I'd hate to see happening, especially for all three of you. You can't come to a workable agreement and you're gonna be living by each other.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you don't start off on that?
Well, we were amicable talking out there a bit ago, so we, we, I mean, it, it's. Uh, it, that, it, 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 it protects his property too at the same time. I, I mean, he doesn't really know what Paul has transpired, Paul didn't really know, Paul didn't live back there, we do.
Could we hypothetically just throw us out, take no action today, and then when you get closer to moving in, bring it back up and change it then? I mean, but that puts us into a winter timeframe and trying to get rock.
That's one thing I'm telling you, if those gates are shut, it was all drifted shut, I couldn't even get in.
But I'm gonna tell you.
To your point, to your point.
Say everybody's point.
And I'll give you an example, when the gates were open back in, cause Elizabeth never shut the gate on a regular basis. So Mr. Hunter goes charging back there, cause there's a deer back there, and he's shooting a, a deer. I have a soft heart, he's shooting a deer, uh, within two hundred yards of my house. Um, he got chewed out royally, um, and then I asked him to help me shut the gate. Because it was drifted shut, because the gate wasn't, I mean, he's fair about that, and that it got drifted open. And that's why that hunter charged back there. Yes, it makes it for a very difficult situation, when I've seen everything that happens at my house located in such a way, and I work from my home. So I can see what transpires a little bit more than even Dean about him.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying.
Happened, but I don't know how weak and controlled, cause that could happen if it was, if they came along my road.
The gates are open.
Gravel road myself, I mean, they could have stopped in my driveway and shot a deer as well, I mean. People are gonna be rude regardless of what, unfortunately.
I don't mind tabling it, the concept of tabling it, for him to see more of what transpired down there, I mean, his.
But we can't put it off too long, cause if he needs.
I am not worried about it, I'm just gonna be honest with you, I, I'm not.
How would work, how would you guys all feel, cause you guys are the parties that directly affected, let's say we did table, get through your construction process, you know, there. Three months, six months after living there, we all sit down and just say, okay, how has the traffic been affected by you living back there?
That's a fair sweep, I mean, I mean, death knows how much I pay attention to.
That's not what you want, Casey, but as, not what they want either.
I just don't want gates at the end of my road, who would?
No.
Any of you? Would you wanna gate at the end of your road?
Same time I'm just trying to make a point of.
You're defending their property when they have, don't have to access their property, that's the difference, from this point, this is how I get to my house, they're defended.
I access the back all the time, Casey, and my, my, and I put up a new fence, um, I mean, we've gone ahead and put the fence back up.
You're gonna be doing it several times a day, once you get moved there, though.
It's be, it be, you all live on gravel roads, it's my gravel road now, you know what I mean?
No, I, I totally understand that.
Yeah.
But by action this board has taken years ago, and all, these people have become accustomed to that.
Yeah.
Action.
That is what I'm saying.
And now we're trying to change that back to.
We accommodated the request and, you know, we, we, you try to, things change.
And that's the point, that there is a need to take a look at it. Absolutely, but I do think it'd be fair to wait till after this fourth of July holiday, just to kind of get through the holiday, knowing that, that, that's a busy time for people that.
Sure.
Don't know where to put off fireworks and they see this road and they go up there. That's not that long to kind of wait a little bit to get through the holiday, I'm like.
Can I interject when we're saying, this, this one that brought up the table back in two thousand and three, it was not us, fortunately, then we're up, it was. So we got pushed into doing something twenty one years ago. Twenty-one years ago again, and so.
So was it a road before then, or?
It was a road.
It's been a public road for a long, long time.
It was hangman's yell. Does that ring bells, Craig or Gene? It was hangman's yell. Jerry?
She's.
But I tried to kind of explain.
Always have her up there.
There were no official. Area service A, B, or C road designations until early two thousands.
Do any level C roads have, um, residents on them?
No.
Okay.
Do all level C roads have gates?
That's the difference. That's what makes it be in a, a C.
That's the difference, the classification and the trespassing, that those are the two differences. The gate barring it or something barring it, and the other difference is. That I can, if somebody's on there that shouldn't be there, I can go back and say, I'm gonna call the sheriff and, and, and remove the brake.
I had commented to Casey a couple of weeks ago, Andy. And explained about the C road and B road. And he was appreciable that time with the C road. Just putting two small signs up, says C road, no trespassing. I talked to Ben about it a little bit and he was appreciable with that, with that doing.
I, I told him, the authority from Bruce said that was something you, you could.
We're looking at different signage there or something.
The authority we know that it lies in the.
I think you could take my personal opinion and. I deal with water road stuff and all those too. I think you could put a, a sign down on the bottom, which probably could be there right now.
Right now.
Regardless. Yeah, our dead end road usually detours a ton of people because they think, oh, there's two houses up there. That's it.
Yeah.
They're not even gonna know that that lane, they could think that that's my lane. You know what I'm saying? Um, there's no sign there right now. So.
Average person is going to not wanna be on a dead end road.
Yeah.
They just don't know what's up there.
Yeah.
They'll, people that are going against what the sign says, in my opinion, would be people that are up to no good. I'll just say it like that.
And that's where I'm going back to. They wanna leave the gates up and open. Well, if, if the gates are up and open. And it's four in the morning and somebody that's not supposed to be there, is there anyways? Is that gonna stop them?
Unfortunately, the people that aren't supposed.
It's a level C road, so technically they can still be on there anyways if the gates are open, right? But you have the right to go kick them off if they're. Trying to get on your land.
No, level C road, I can kick them off if they don't have the right to do that. You have the right to go back there, but nobody else does.
As the.
Unless, when Paul, when Paul did, Paul could say, you know, kids wanna go, um, fish back there or whatever. He assigns them the right to do that.
I mean, I'm not opposed, I guess, to table it until after the Fourth of July. I think it'd give me, I'd like to have an opportunity to. Drive back there myself. And.
Did the gate open because we wanted to drive back there?
Well.
But they wanna shut it on the fourth.
I just like to drive.
See what I'm saying?
Fine.
And then what if somebody wants to shut it one day and my family's not there? My wife comes back and she doesn't have a key? Can't even get to her own house?
Casey, after Nerman talked to you about it, we left it open.
But before that, it was being shut every time I opened it. It got shut one time when I was in my own ground. It got shut locked and I came out and the gate was shut.
After we had a conversation, we left it open.
Well, I'm having the conversation now and this is where I'll end it and I'm trying to be respectful.
I appreciate that very much.
There's probably not a level C road in any county that has a residence on it that has gates on it. Yeah, I, I do a lot of this stuff.
Very good point.
And I don't wanna take up a bunch of you guys' time for something that I find. Pretty simple. Um, there's a residency being built there now. It changes things. I get their concerns. But I also think with me living back there, it's gonna change a lot of me traveling up and down the road.
I agree.
So.
I agree.
That's what I'll admit.
I think it'll deter people from going back, that when they see a house and thinking that they can have the parties that they used to have.
With signs up at the bottom of the hill.
Signs?
You already gave it, right?
Immediately.
That'll start the traffic flowing.
Yeah, and that Paul will know. Paul's been doing this longer. I would trust him on any of the signage. He'll tell you what would work best, um. And whether it's a dead end road or whatever, I would trust him over anybody, um, but. Like I said, I, I just, I don't think that there needs to be gates there and I don't. Like I said, if the county could help me with some rock or work with me on that, I would appreciate it. If not, please let me.
Toll booth that have.
Because it is muddy there.
Toll booth, yes.
Toll booths I have, they don't beat people up. Nobody's got a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, it's hard to.
I owe what they ask.
To have the answer to exactly how to keep the people who are out with list of off of any road or anybody's.
And I wanna be a good neighbor. Someday I wanna go push all their snow for them. You know, that's the type of person I wanna be, but.
I know that. I know that.
You know, you gotta understand that I'm gonna be living back there. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful lane. I am for a hundred percent. I hope the county never touches a tree. If there's an issue with the tree, I'll handle it. I'll do it myself because it is beautiful and I know she loves the trees as much as I do, um.
That's true.
And, yeah.
Love it. Yeah, it's beautiful.
Paul, just start with signs. We're gonna table it for now.
And then after the fourth, I mean, what's the plan or what do you, you gotta let us know what you guys' thoughts are there, I guess.
We'll, but get it back on the agenda.
And we'll have another meeting and see what you guys think or.
It needs to be a close set or a public hearing at that time. I think, uh, by then we have all of our facts and. Okay. Back on the agenda and let everybody know and, uh, have some time to get the signs up and. Go from there.
Okay.
Appreciate everybody's input. Uh, I personally respect everybody's, uh, opinion about. I understand these roads that there's. Mannequins going on, uh, and you live there just.
Yeah, and I'm with them. I don't want anybody back there.
I know you, I don't, I know you don't want anybody, especially in your construction phase, you know, got somebody back there. Messing with stuff and nobody has the right to kick them off and. You're just kind of in a 22 right at this exact moment.
And I do have gates on my property that I can shut if you guys do decide to do something that.
Yeah.
Till I'm officially there, I can keep her closed, but.
Try to keep your property safe also when you're not able to be there, but I do understand the gate being locked and a key and you need to get back there. You know, and part of it is maybe just have a chain without the lock temporarily to. You know, keep somebody from not wanting.
Yeah.
Too lazy to get out.
Well, I have a lot of people that need to get back there right now too.
A lot of people.
Building and I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Um, if I'm on the road working somewhere, it's hard to.
Yeah, wanna keep the looky-loos out too, that are back there and then it's muddy or whatever and then you got people stuck and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, and that's something you guys can look at too about rock. And like Paul said, if it's something I can work with you guys on. It is muddy sometimes and I don't also wanna be dragging mud, which I have and tried to not on all where they're driving.
It's a whole different, it's a, it's a, it's a change and change is hard, no matter. What part of our life's change is occurring and it's always hard and as long as we can come to a resolution that is satisfactory, I think we're gonna be doing our.
Once I get back there, they probably won't even know we're back there much. We'll be.
Yeah.
Two things. When do you wanna bring it back up? This public hearing will close and then there'll be considerations. So I think for these people here to know when. You know, if you might wanna just create a day. A few weeks out, say we're gonna, we're gonna reconsider it this meeting on this date. Just because no fish will actually be taken.
All right.
But I understand.
Yeah.
But if it be another public hearing, it will just be taking.
July ninth? Give us a chance to kind of get to all the signs we have. When do you think the signs would be up?
We put signs up anyway. There's no, there's no issue. I mean, that, that, that could be done right away.
Call was mentioned the sixteenth.
The sixteenth?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll bring it back on the sixteenth.
Sixteen.
Get everybody chanted to kind of.
I've worked with you. And in the last comment, I wanna be, is, uh, not from a county's near standpoint, but from a, a citizen of Crawford County, is that.
I don't have.
Well, we have young families that wanna establish themselves. And take over a family business. I think we should celebrate that.
Absolutely.
Be very happy to see that because that doesn't happen all the time.
Oh, it does.
I think this is a case for seeing, uh, a young family wants to establish themselves in the county, wanna be good citizens in the county. Uh, Tim wants to stretch in that this is, they run, it's been a very good business for Crawford County. And I think that's something to celebrate.
I agree a hundred percent. Thank you for putting house in the county.
Yeah.
You bet. So on the sixteenth, we'll revisit. Is there anybody a chance to see, get us through the holidays? And, uh, take action on the sixteenth?
And I can, uh, just so you guys know, I'll just let everybody know, uh, around the port, if you guys are that worried about it, since nobody's back there, I will. I'll try to get it locked up.
You worry about your stuff.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I mean, you know that I called you one day and, and thought somebody was.
Yeah.
Somewhere they shouldn't be.
Yeah, and I would do the same for you guys. I know when. When there was cattle and they might not even know about it, there was cattle on their CRP and I got ahold of Kurt Rocker and helped him get him out of there, so. I'm a neighbor. I grew up here with all of you, so.
Get along with neighbors and a good start is absolutely.
Yeah.
Parents are a happy life.
Work together.
Good neighbors, happy life.
You bet.
Thank you for considering it. Thank you for everybody.
Yeah, thank you guys for taking the time.
Absolutely. All right, so.
Okay, so sixteen.
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 July sixteen. How many motions have closed the public hearing?
Thank you.
Second.
All right, on favor I?
All right.
The host, uh, the chair votes I. The pu- public hearing has now been closed.
And then take action on table. Action on the resolution until. Uh, take action because we have discussed and take action. Okay, so I think.
Anyone make the most.
Six, I think what we wanna do is just say we'll table action and that until the last.
Now, make the most suitable table?
Salute.
Till, uh, July sixteenth at, uh, at AM. Okay?
Second.
All right.
That's why I did put on their approved, because I didn't know for sure.
Thank you. Disrespect is good, so.
Anyone wants to go out, take a look at it?
I do.
I, I definitely wanna go.
I know exactly where it's at, but I've not ventured on, uh, all the way, so.
So, um, I. I've got a one o'clock meeting today, but, uh, you know.
Maybe tomorrow.
Just give me a call.
All right, we'll do it. We got your number.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on tabling, uh, uh, item? If not, I'll call the motion. All favor I? Any vote, same sign, uh, chair votes I, so we will revisit that on the sixteen. All righty, discuss to take action on the audit presentation. Chris? Come on up.
Chris, morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Good time you're here again. Well, actually, we're behind, so. Right, you get all those.
All right.
And, you know, normally we're here in March, um. You know, unfortunately, we're here in June this year. Um, thank you for your patience and. For us getting the audit done, but, uh, I guess maybe the main thing I wanna say before we get started is. It's not because we ran into issues at the county during the audit that we are here in June instead of March. It's really, it's on us. Uh, we lost a couple staff people. We're behind in getting things done. And so here we are in June, getting things finished up, so. Okay, so, uh, with that, if you turn in a couple of pages to the independent auditors report. Um, just to point out here, this is standard wording for unmodified opinions on your financial statements. That's what you're after. Uh, it means in our opinion, your financial statements are fairly stated. Uh, the independent auditor's report is about three pages, um. And then following that is management discussion and analysis, which is about seven pages. Um, I don't intend to go through it. Um, it's a report that's required, um, from government accounting standards. Um, and it's from you to readers of your financial statements. We assist in preparing it. But it gives information maybe more in a narrative. For people that aren't used to looking at numbers on financial statements and giving them a little, uh, information of what's going on and what's coming around the corner. Um, if you turn past that, uh, to the first financial statement on pages four and five. And it's exhibit A. Um, as in the past, uh, there are three sets of financial statements that are included, uh, in your audit. Uh, even though you do your budget on a cash basis, maintain your books on a cash basis. Basis, uh, the financial statements included in your audit are on accrual basis. And on a modified accrual basis, and we'll kind of go through what the differences are. Um, this first, uh, statement, exhibit A, and also exhibit B, uh, are the first set. They are full accrual basis financial statements. Um, they include, um, all receivables, payables, your long-term debt, pension accounting. They also include, uh, farm-to-market money. That comes through the state that doesn't actually run through your books, but they are included on your full accrual, uh, financial statements. Uh, so looking at, uh, the left-hand side of page four, under your assets. Uh, touching on some of the larger items, at the end of the year, uh. I might also say, before we get started, this also includes your internal service fund. Uh, within this, uh, financial statement. So, uh, with that, your cash at the end of the year, just over sixteen million dollars. Uh, very good position. Uh, it includes succeeding your property tax receivable. So this is the property tax you levy during the year that you're gonna collect in the next year. Uh, it shows as a receivable, but under government accounting standards, we can't recognize that as revenue, which is a little different than normal accrual basis. Um, it shows as a deferred inflow of resources or deferred revenue, uh, down at the bottom of the page, so it shows as both on this financial statement. Uh, inventory at the end of the year, three million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, and capital assets, um, being depreciated and not being depreciated, combined just over forty-seven million. And total, your assets were seventy-eight million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, the next line, deferred outflows of resources related to Gatsby statement number sixty-eight in the pension accounting rules. Eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. This pension accounting is really here just for disclosure purposes, um. Last year, this was nine hundred and two thousand, so relatively, uh, consistent. And it represents expenses of the IPRIS program that you are going to recognize. Over the next future years, next several years.
You say next several years?
Yeah, about over the next five years, but this number, you know, changes.
Is it always for the next five years?
Yeah, but then it gets added to every time, um. Know if I can really explain this very well?
IPRIS payments that are being paid to retirees or.
Part of it.
That were paying for current employees.
Part of it, and probably the largest portion, is. Your contributions during fiscal year twenty-three. Are shown here as a deferred outflow of resources. And the reason for that is. All of the pension accounting information is a year behind. And so. We can't recognize that expense. When all the other IPRIS information is a year behind.
Oh.
Okay, gotcha, so.
Glad you knew.
Yeah.
Was this all brought on back in like twenties, fifteen, sixteen, similar?
Yeah, maybe the last six years.
Were they returning to question the viability of IPRIS?
And it's, it's not really so much IPRIS, because IPRIS is one of the best ones in the country. Um, there's someone like Illinois that the funding position on those is plural. Um, and so they want readers of the financial statements to know. You know, what the unfunded portion is, um. It'd be better just to have, in my. Little opinion, it'd be better just to have it in the footnotes rather than muddying up your financial statements, because most readers aren't gonna know what the heck that means. Um, but. That's what it's there.
Cause I just. Remember at one point in time, there was a, you had started reporting.
Right.
Prior.
Yep.
Because of some legislation.
Right, it, I mean, it is legislation and changed then that came through the government accounting standards.
Cause I like my first year on the board, that was on, or like second year.
Okay, yeah.
You, they had to start putting out cash.
Remember them when you got.
Liability.
Right.
In the.
Right. Um, and we'll see going down the page, looking at some of the other ones. These numbers bounce around every year based on how the IPRS, uh, retirement program works. What their investment results were, what their payouts were, you know, how did actual results compared to what their actuaries were estimating? And so all of that flows through the unfunded liability as well as the deferred inflows and outflows of resources. So. Messy.
Messy.
Yes. Um, looking at liabilities, not a lot of change here, um, just normal, um, operating payables for the most part, accounts payable of one point one million. Uh, you have under revenues of two million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. This is ARPA money that you've received that you haven't spent yet. Um, your long-term debt, um, the current portion, a hundred and forty-five thousand in general of, of general obligation bonds and a long-term portion, a hundred and fifty thousand. So you're getting very close to having that paid off. And then the net, uh, pension liability shown this year, two million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Uh, as I say, things bounce around a lot. Last year that was an asset of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. So last year, so again, we're a year behind. So June thirty of twenty-one, markets were in really good shape. There was actually the IPRS plan was overfunded. And you had, uh, so you were showing a, an asset. Now, a year later in twenty-two.
Position of about three million dollars.
Yes. Yeah. And, and that's just your little sliver.
Right, our little sliver.
Of the big plan, you know, I mean, it's billions of dollars. Um, so again, it's here for disclosure. It's not a liability that you will pay.
Right.
They can't call you and say, hey, we want our money. You know, you continue to make your contributions based on the statutory rates like you have. Again, it's there for, uh, disclosure. Uh, the deferred inflows of resources, uh, touched on the unavailable property tax revenue of ten million dollars. Uh, and then the last pension accounting item, uh, related to deferred inflows, five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So these are revenues that you will recognize over future periods of time. Um.
What are unavailable property tax revenue? What is that?
So that's property taxes that you've levied in the current year that you will collect in the next year. So.
Okay.
Yep. And that's just the county's share, not like for the hospital or in the cities or any, yeah, school. Um, so that deferred inflows for the pension-related asset or pension, uh, accounting, last year that was four point five million and this year's five hundred and seventeen thousand. So again, bounces around based on, this is based on primarily the, uh, investment results that the IPRS program has compared to what their actuaries are estimating. You know, previously, they had great results. They went down, deferred inflows went down. Um, and then that gets us to the right-hand page, your net position, uh, your equity, uh, many times called sixty-one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This is up from last year. Overall, the county's in a very good financial position.
How many counties do you audit? I believe it's probably six, I believe. So do you ever do anything as far as, uh, how do you picture a county that's healthy or in good shape? Is it, you know, population divided into that net position? Or is there some formula that you say, hey, you need to be maybe a little bit aware?
There really isn't, you know, any formula, uh, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Um, you know, you look at your debt leverage, which yours is very low. Um, you know, every county is a little bit different. Um, you know, you actually are a large accounting, um, as far as roads you gotta maintain and bridges and, you know, some of those things. Um, that, that makes yours a little bit unique, uh, compared to some of the others, but.
That'd be an interesting stat though, to divide that between.
Oh, I shouldn't.
I'm just curious if there was something out there that you kind of use as a, whatever.
You know, not, not that I'm aware of, yeah.
Do our, uh, assets as far as like the courthouse itself, the jail, the secondary roads building, does that change much?
Well, it's appreciated every, every year.
How do you come up with a value on a courthouse? I think it's not really a self-washt, you know?
Right?
Yeah.
Um, years ago, um, and to be quite honest, I'm not even sure that the courthouse is on the books. Um, because it wasn't until like ninety-eight that the capital assets were brought on. Um, there may have been an estimate done to estimate the value and then it was brought in and then depreciated over the next forty years or whatever its estimated life is. Um, the roads, at that point in time, I don't, I don't think they were brought in, but as you made improvements or building new bridges or what have you, those get brought in into your capital assets and then they're depreciated over a set, uh, estimated useful life. Um, so capital assets for the county include all the roads. Yes, yep. And on the infrastructure, culverts, um, you know, of course, the, the improvements you made to the, the sheriff's, uh, building and, and things of that nature, so.
Doesn't work. Surely really don't own the buildings.
It was your money that, that put it in there.
People are, you know, for the county.
Assets on my cash flow at the, I ain't gonna help me a lot.
Because yeah, if we vacate a road, it goes back to the landowners.
Things are making you go.
Yeah, yeah.
This is definitely one of them.
Accounting rules don't necessarily jive with everybody else's, so I mean, it's, you know, there are some things that I just don't think are right, but we follow what we follow, yeah. Uh, the next page, uh, exhibit B, page six, this is the full accrual income statement. Obviously looks very different than most income statements you, uh, may be used to looking at. Um, again, some of the differences, it includes depreciation expense, which was about two point nine million dollars for the county this past year. And it includes farm-to-market money. So you spent about three point one million dollars of your share of the farm-to-market money that's through the, uh, the Iowa DOT. So that shows as revenue here. But the expenditure is part of your capital assets, so it's not included on this income statement. There's depreciation expense instead. Um, and so other capital purchases that the county did pay out of their checkbook, about two point one million are not expenses here. They're part of the additions to the capital assets. Again, depreciation expense is what's included. Um, and your debt payment obviously is a reduction to debt rather than expenditure. So starting on the left-hand side, your expenses on an accrual basis, twenty million, eight hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, then we move to the right and these are, we look at the program revenues. So these are revenues that are specifically related to certain expenses that you've incurred. So charges for services, uh, offset that twenty million dollars by two million, fifty-six thousand. You had other operating revenues of six million, three hundred and seven thousand. That five point three million is road use money. Um, and then you had capital, uh, receipts, revenues, three point six million. Most of that was farm-to-market money. Uh, some of it was ARPA money. And so that gets us to the far right-hand column of eight point eight million dollars that's in brackets. What that means is you had then remaining eight million dollars or almost nine million dollars of expenses that weren't covered by program-specific revenues. So you use your general revenues to cover those expenses. Uh, general revenues being primarily with property taxes, uh, local option sales tax, some state credits that you get. Um, those totaled, those general revenues totaled twelve million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. Uh, that compared to the eight point eight million negative, you had an overall increase in your net position for the year of three million, five hundred and eighteen thousand.
You have listed up the state credits of what uh, the differences from this year to last year, and then we had a lot of changes from credits to exemptions. Just curious. Yeah, our number on.
Oh.
How much that actually?
I mean, I, I have last year, the credits were five hundred and sixty-four thousand.
What are they this year?
Five thirty-two.
Not mine.
And remember.
Year by year. This is twenty. You're behind already.
Yeah, this ended June of twenty-three, so.
We need that year to tell the difference.
Yeah, when he comes back next week and gives us the next.
Next.
So this was twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'm, I was just curious because, you know, I changed.
Almost a year ago. Two years ago.
Absolutely. And we weren't necessarily.
So we're probably would be very similar.
Yeah.
In this report. I mean.
We've seen the big change there.
Yeah.
No, we have, yeah.
And the one that you're looking at hypothetically won't be until we do a report in.
It'll be in two years because it'll be the twenty-five year.
Right, okay.
Be the one.
Yeah.
That's when they predicted.
Year we're about to start in July, first hit the wall is what they used to do.
So once we finish that year, they'll start auditing that year.
Right.
Yeah.
Barely get done, you'll start over.
The number in the back of your head, Dave.
Right.
I'm good at memory. And then in two years, you can ask that question.
Yeah, that's right.
And then we can go back and look at it. Memory not needed.
Okay, to the next page, page seven, exhibit C. Uh, this starts the second set of financial statements, uh, exhibit C and E. Uh, this is under a modified accrual basis and it's also by major fund of the county. Particular set of rules that identify which funds are major funds. Uh, your general fund is always major. Uh, your other major funds are rural services, secondary roads and, uh, ARPA. Then all of the other funds are considered non-major reported, uh, together. Then some of the differences, uh, there are no capital assets reported under your assets. Um, no long-term debt, no pension accounting. Um, it does not include the internal service fund. Uh, it's reported separately. So, uh, looking at this on the far right, your revenues under this modified accrual basis was thirty million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand. Uh, you see looking from left to right, general fund was about half of that at fifteen million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Rural services, a little over four million. Secondary roads, seven point three, and, uh, your ARPA fund at just under two point four million. Liabilities totaled three million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand. Most of that is in the ARPA fund of under revenues. Um, the deferred inflows of resources, um, again, still includes the succeeding year property taxes of, of ten million. But then you have other, uh, unavailable revenues of two hundred and eighty thousand. Um, some of this is the opioid money that's been received and been earned. Um, let's continue to the next page and we come to the fund balances. Um, in total, your fund balance, uh, fifteen million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. A little more than half on your general fund at eight million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand. Uh, rural services, three hundred and thirty thousand, secondary roads, six point two, and a non-major at nine hundred and forty. So again, uh, your major funds, good, good position. Um, on page nine is exhibit D and it's a reconciliation of basically the balance sheets between the full accrual and modified accrual. Uh, the top line is the modified accrual basis, uh, fund balance we just saw on the previous page, fifteen million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And kind of looking at a summary of the various changes, uh, to get us through the full accrual, uh, net position of sixty-one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. See the large ones, capital assets, internal service fund, pension accounting, uh, and the lack on that. On page ten, exhibit E is the modified accrual income statement, again by major funds. Um, does not include depreciation, um, or farm-to-market money, but it does include the capital purchases. You had about two point one million. Those show as expenditures, no pension accounting, and it does not include the internal service fund. Uh, so looking here, your revenues, uh, twenty-one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand. Uh, property taxes, uh, about nine point six million, local option sales tax, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and intergovernmental revenues of eight million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, most of which was found in the roads or, yeah, uh, road use fund. General fund had nine point six million of revenues, rural services, three point seven, and secondary roads just under six point seven. Expenditures totaled twenty million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, uh, reported by function. Um, general fund, eight point four million, uh, rural services, one point one million, uh, secondary roads, just over ten million. Um, and the ARPA funds, eight hundred thousand. And then finishing this page on the next, uh, finishing this financial statement on the next page, our other financing sources and uses. The transfers are shown here. Um, you also sold, uh, some capital assets in the secondary roads, about ninety-three thousand dollars. Getting us to the total change in fund balance, uh, for the, uh, funds, five hundred and forty thousand. Uh, the general fund increased nine hundred and forty-one thousand. Rural services and secondary roads both had decreases. Um, and your non-major fund had an increase of two hundred and one thousand. And then that gets us down to the fund balances we saw previously, uh, by major fund. And following that is exhibit F. Uh, this is a reconciliation of basically the net income, um, of the two financial statements, uh, your increase in the fund balances for the modified accrual, we just saw five hundred and forty thousand, uh, showing the various changes. A lot of being capital, uh, the accounting for capital items and depreciation expense, long-term debt, pension accounting, uh, to get us to the increase in your net position for the full accrual at three million, five hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, the last set of financial statements, uh, is for the internal service fund. This is on an accrual basis, a full accrual. Um, they chose your cash at the end of the year, one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. You had liabilities for claims incurred but not yet paid of just under sixty-four thousand and a net position of one point one million. So your internal service fund is in a good, uh, financial position. Exhibit H, uh, is the income statement for the internal service fund. Your operating revenues, one million, five hundred and thirty thousand, um, of which one point two million came from, uh, the county. Uh, three hundred and fourteen thousand came from employees. Uh, operating expenses were one million, seven hundred and six, uh, thousand dollars. Claims being just under one point six, uh, million and administrative insurance premiums, uh, hundred and seven thousand dollars. You had investment interest, uh, on your funds of eighteen thousand, overall a net loss, uh, for the year of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And then exhibit I is a cash flow statement required for your internal service fund. And it shows on a cash basis how dollars are spent and where they come from. Um, again, uh, cash received from operating funds, one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, cash from employees and others, three hundred and fourteen thousand. Cash paid to suppliers for services for medical, uh, claims as well as administrative fees, a million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. So you had a use of funds from operating activities of three hundred and twenty thousand. Investment activities were interest income of eighteen thousand. And that gets us to the overall decrease you had this past year in your cash of three hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, for the internal service fund. But again, overall, your internal service fund, I would consider to be in a good position. Um, the last two statements, exhibit J and K are informational. It shows, uh, dollars you have on hand as well as what went through the county's books for custodial funds. Money that you collect or remit for other organizations, for other entities. The county, uh, the county hospital, schools, cities, anything that you're collecting property taxes for uh, in one month and you're turning around and remitting that to those entities in the next month. Um, shows your assets, twenty-seven million, five hundred and seven thousand. However, succeeding year property tax revenue of twenty-four million, six hundred thousand um, is the largest portion of that. Um, without that, you had about two point eight, two point nine million dollars of, of assets, most of that cash on hand that you're going to remit to those entities in July of twenty-three. Um, you have the liabilities of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Unavailable property taxes, twenty-four, a million, six twenty-two, and net position, uh, restricted for individuals, organizations, and other governments, one point nine. So this is, these are not funds of the county. On page seventeen is then the, basically the income statement. What flowed through the county's books, um, additions, thirty-five million, three hundred and four thousand, property taxes, twenty-three million of that. Um, auto license fees are another large number, seven million. Uh, deductions are the amounts paid out of the funds that you collected, uh, thirty-six million, one hundred and twelve thousand. Uh, so there was an overall decrease, uh, in the assets you had on hand of eight hundred and eight thousand dollars. A lot of numbers I know overall, county's in a good financial position. Um, following the financial statements are footnotes and supplementary information. I don't intend to go through them. Um, the footnotes, there isn't anything new or unusual. Standard footnote disclosures, it gives readers of your financial statements more information about, uh, accounting policies you follow, debt, pension accounting, uh, things of that nature. Um, what I would like you to turn back to is page fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Um, so looking at the right-hand page, page fifty-nine, uh, right in the middle, uh, your total, uh, expenditures of federal awards, which is what this, uh, schedule is, was one million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So you spent one point six million dollars of federal money, uh, during the fiscal year. Anytime that number is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're required to do additional compliance testing uh, under the Single Audit Act or, and Uniform Guidance. So you hear about, you know, a single audit. That's what that means. It's additional compliance testing. Did you comply with the steps you were supposed to in spending, uh, your federal money? Um, we don't test all of it. We test your major programs. Uh, this year, your major program was your ARPA money, where you spent eight hundred thousand dollars of the one point six million. Um, and following this, uh, schedule are the compliance reports um, related to our findings during the audit. Um, they were all positive. Um, on page sixteen, sixty-one, this is a report related to your internal controls and compliance with various laws, regulations, contracts, so forth. Uh, the left-hand side is related to internal. Uh, the left-hand side is related to internal controls, and we did not identify any issues, um. That we consider written, uh, warranted, written, uh, in your report related to your internal controls. Just the way the counties are set up, uh, segregating the duties of collections and dispersments. Um, and having more people involved, that does a very good job of internal controls. Um, you know, I, I will say as a reminder to you as a board, you're part of the internal controls. You know, when you go through claims, you know, make sure, you know, follow along, what's going on, um, other issues that come up, just be aware, uh, of what's happening. Something doesn't look right, you know, ask questions. Um, on the right-hand side, page sixty one, under compliance. Uh, again, we, as part of the audit, we test your compliance with various laws, regulations, contracts, that there, there were non-compliance. Um, and there would be a material, direct and material effect on your financial statements. Um, based on our testing, oh, we did not disclose any instances of non-compliance. So that's again a positive. On page sixty two, sixty three, and sixty four is the compliance report related to our compliance testing of your major program. Um, so this report is new in this year for you because you didn't have the single audit in, in the past year. But, uh, basically the second, uh, paragraph is the most important. And it says, in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements referred to above. That could have a direct material effect on its major federal program. That means is we did not identify any compliance issues, uh, related to the testing of your expenditures of that major program. Uh, the rest of it is all standard wording, reminders of what your responsibilities are, what ours are, and so forth. Uh, page sixty five is just a summary of the independent auditors' results, which we have reviewed. Um, sixty six and sixty seven, um, part two is related to the financial statements where we review. There are no internal control deficiencies, no instances of non-compliance. Part three is related to, uh, federal awards, where again, no instances of, uh, internal control deficiencies or non-compliance. Uh, part four, uh, there are ten items that are listed here, and these are required to be included in your report, uh, required by the state auditor's office. And all of them are positive comments. Um, related to the budget, there were no expenditures exceeding your budget, no questionable expenditures, no travel expense, uh, issues. Or business transactions a- and so forth, all of those are positive, so. Again, as I, I said before, you know, thank you for your patience, had we had issues. You know, you would be aware of them way before now, uh, so.
Your, your.
Your part four turns into part two.
There you go. We know, and, and we can look at these things until we're cross-eyed and. So, yeah, these, uh, these go through quite an extensive review process and it, there's still gonna be things that.
So Chris, where do, do you file these then with, do you, how many should do with the state officer?
Yep.
The state has an opportunity to look through them, and if they would, do they ever audit, to audit?
Occasionally.
Occasionally, okay.
Um, they are put for public, uh, viewing, whatever, on their, on their website. So we're required to submit them to the state, um, you get to file a fee, you get to pay the state for you to file your report with them.
And it's, and it's required.
Yes, it is, and it's required. Um, but then if, uh, the state won't normally come out and look at anything, um. I've, I've never had one where they said, oh, this is a glaring issue, we're coming out. Um, but if there happened to be enough signatures or petition of residents, voters, that. Don't like something that's going on, they can file that with the state auditor's office and they will come out. Um, they will first come and they'll come to our office, they'll look at our work papers, they'll look at all the testing that we did. Um, to see if they can rely on it, or if it was detailed enough, depending on whatever the issue is that people didn't like. Um, they'll review our reports, um, and then they will go and come to the county or whatever the entity. And they will do additional testing and, and make their report. So it, it can happen, um.
I haven't heard of that often, certainly.
No, no, it doesn't happen a lot, but, um, but it, it does, it does.
Where I, I mean, I, I just remember what you had on the school board, we were about the same thing, you know, staff change with the auditor. And we had to keep filing for extension because of what, are we, we're not in any way period.
No, no, but we have an extension through the end of the month.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. Oh, no, Chris, you just say we're pretty consistent year in, year out.
You are, uh, and you have been, um, and just in a good financial position, your, your general fund and. Room, or, yeah, uh, road use, um, are in very good position, um, there are some counties that aren't in such good shape. Um, there are other counties that have significant, much, uh, more significant amount of debt, uh, that they have to service. And they may be issuing, you know, they may be taxing then the county residents for that debt service. Um, actually, property taxes go up obviously, and so, no, uh, you're in a good position. Yeah.
Thank you very much. There are a lot of information to, uh, kind of glean.
Wait, I read it.
Yeah. We'll get a fuller report in the study.
Come on, I have, we have nine, there, there ain't a district, so I thought we had one.
Yeah.
But we don't.
We levy for them.
Well.
We don't fund, I mean, refunding repairs, but, you know.
We would start flooding like, you know, the county, unless they would want to.
Everybody say this, we can go back next year and see the changes.
You know, and it'd be nice to have, you know, prepared statements, but the way they're set up, it just not conducive.
It actually seems thicker than.
Yeah, well, they all got to.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's because we have.
And the single audit, yeah, they're.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
So true.
All right.
Why make a motion to accept the audit presentation from Chris?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion on the audit, any other questions, otherwise call for them both, all favor eye. Any opposed, same sign, chair votes eye, we have, uh, accepted our audit presentation. Been very thorough, a lot of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
It's Chris.
All right.
Yeah.
As far as you're getting their permission.
Uh, most of the information he does, um, communicate with the other departments, you know.
All right, our next item is a resolution, uh, twenty twenty four slash twenty appropriations to department for fiscal year twenty twenty four slash twenty five. Um, so, everybody's.
Did you see it?
Resolution.
Yeah, it shows the appropriation schedule by department.
Is that the whereas, whereas?
No, that's just, well, this is the resolution, but that's the, that's actual appropriation.
Yeah, so this is the time to de-appropriate if we want to.
Correct. These were the numbers that we basically approved.
Right, yeah. I'm not in a favor of de-appropriating, if you want to go through ahead forward next year, you continue to whittle, nothing but you.
Just give everybody a chance to.
That's just my.
Speak now or forever.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing with, with, with that process.
All right.
We just need to get better at it.
Yep.
Right. Stick to your guns, budgets.
At most.
So I'm making a motion to approve appropriation partners for FY twenty four point five.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? What, not on call, vote, on paper, roll call, a roll call, Kyle?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes eye, resolution has been approved. All right, next action is a resolution, uh, twenty twenty four, twenty one. Over there, if any discussed in common.
That was the one for what, seven?
So this is the one, um, that is statutorily, um, guided. Um, the transfer of general basic into general supplemental, remembering that supplemental account, supplemental funds. Pay like FICA and IFRS are very specific things, our elections are under supplemental. Um, so that's a seven hundred thousand dollar transfer. And then the other transfer is a hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred, and that is from rural basic into rural supplemental. Same thing, it's rural supplemental, but it's still like FICA and IFRS and some.
That's the only way we can get the money into those accounts by doing this transfer.
Um, we also levy for.
So we're not levying, and it goes into the general, then we put it in here, we can levy through these other funds, we just.
We do, we don't.
Levy enough.
Enough, but we're, it's allowable by.
By state statute.
Yes, thank you. The words are not coming out of my mouth.
Transfer the money from.
You started it.
General fund. To.
Yep, it's the only way to do it, so, uh, this, so we have a motion to approve it.
So.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? It's a resolution, we're gonna take it, Dave, aye.
Hold on, who moved the second?
Craig, Dave.
Those are.
I know.
Sorry.
You got it.
All right.
Got it.
I'll call the roll.
Sorry.
Craig?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chair votes eye, uh, we have, uh, approved the trust of funds. Alrighty, next item is discussion taking action on the revised employee handbook, uh, seven one of twenty twenty four. See, Amy is in here to update us on the three major changes that, uh, have occurred in our handbook.
Is that what there were, three? Three total.
Big ones, that's my understanding, for significant changes.
Um, yeah, we did, um. Did you guys get the handbook, like the final?
We got it.
Email, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So there was a lot of, a lot of, um, just updating, um. Like, there was little things throughout the book that just needed to be updated, like, um. Something that should be thirty seven and a half hours or forty hours or, uh, public health to community health, you know, little things like that. Um, major things were, um, since we don't have the sheriff contract anymore, getting their union contract into the handbook. Um, um, we. The other big thing was getting rid of longevity and just having that in their base pay, so, um. Because longevity is just not that much, and the department heads just felt like, why are we doing this? Just roll it in the base pay and wherever they're at is where they're at, and I go from there. Um, and we had talked about that, the, the, those are things that we got your blessings before, you know? Um, the vacation schedule, changing that vacation schedule, um.
Which I think was a huge benefit for new hires.
New hires and employees because we changed, um, so like after, right now, after one year, you get forty hours. After two years, you get eighty hours, then you have to wait eight years to get three weeks, and then fifteen or four weeks. And now it's, uh, it's a little easier schedule, it's one, two, or one, five, ten, fifteen. So, because we're getting that, the new hires get that forty hours. So, uh, one year, you get the two weeks, and then you wait five, ten, fifteen, instead of the wonky one, two, eight, fifteen, so. Um. And then there was like some other, um, the assessor added some language about their PPE. Landfill updated their PPE, um, or their reimbursement stuff, um. And I think that's really, the big ones were the longevity vacation. Uh, and then incorporating the sheriff's contract.
Stuff we all talked about.
Yeah, all stuff we talked about, this is just.
It's formalized of it.
Yeah, and I will say, um, you know, we worked with the department heads, the elected officials to, you know, to do this. Um, it wasn't just Chelsea or me, it was a group effort. Um, and I will say, one of the department heads had a good idea, and we kind of reworded. Um, like, under reimbursements. Um, just kind of clarified, if you are doing an overnight stay, um, what the, the logging. If the old handbook really just said, if you're gonna have an overnight stay, you need to go here to book your hotel or something like that. And now it's like, kind of, kind of explaining why, and it's that, um, stop the, the chain of traffic. They just kind of reworded it a little bit to make it a little bit.
I don't know of any event that doesn't have a.
Right.
You know, they're all certified.
Right.
Unless you go out to some hotel on your own, that's.
Yeah, but I think all the hotels, we would talk to have that now. So, because I was kind of looking at it, and I was like, I think all the hotels.
I know, I don't think it changed, I know one time we had talked about Barry Anderson and those guys used, uh, national zip code registry for. Your hotel amounts. But.
Yeah, all that's in there now is a single room rate. Um. Yeah, when traveling over a hundred miles from Crawford County Courthouse at a single room rate. And then, but none of that has changed, we just kind of updated some of the language to make it, explain it just a little bit better, is all we changed. We didn't actually change any of the actual benefit or whatever.
So we have that in our manual, that our employees say they'll follow that they'll have a single room rate. And they get a double room, do they pay the difference then?
I, I mean, that's how I understand it, like if I, you know, we are going to Des Moines tomorrow. If my husband wanted to come with me and we got a suite, I would think that, that I would only submit the single room rate. And then if I got a hot tub and it got crazy, I'd be paying the extra.
How do you, uh, how, we as the county ensure that, that, that does happen? Because I don't think the corporate kind taxpayers owe employees a full-on vacation with two-room, uh, condos.
Right.
Uh, you know, full meals for four people, how, how, what teeth do we have in that?
That's if I turn in.
Well, yeah, you were, you turn in your receipts, and then it, we verify, me, well, Michelle has to do all of the overnight stuff.
Okay.
But she would verify that it was a single room rate, and then we have the, you know, breakfast, lunch, dinner, ten, fifteen, twenty.
So then you adjust the receipts?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then we don't give out.
We just do that with urgent burning, it's just.
Right.
And what we will pay, okay, uh, already. Then there's, there's no change, uh, how they are converting, it's always been the same, once you get the ninety days of sick leave, they can, uh, turn that into a vacation day. And that's always been the same.
Yeah, and so to go along with the vacation, just to kind of refresh your memory, we used to do sick, we used to receive, um, um. Day and a half for sick leave every month, and we backed that down to just a day to get a better vacation schedule. So that will be changing as well.
Yeah, so each four days of sick leave earned in excess of ninety, but not used, maybe exchanged for one additional day of vacation.
And that's something that I check every month, so if, um, so if somebody has reached that limit, I do a conversion.
I would say all these changes are positive to our employees.
And if more beneficial.
I, I mean, I think so, I think, you know, like I said, worked with Chelsea, worked with, um, department heads and, you know, I think. It was all positive changes, I, I can't imagine anyone not being liking this new vacation schedule. And then we also have that caveat in there, after twenty years, um, if someone wanted to cash out a week of vacation, they can. Um, but they have to. Um, but they have to decide before December, so the elected official or department head knows. Um, so they can work it in their budget. So that was. Yeah, it is.
Okay, I read it on my computer, but I didn't have it paper form, so I'm struggling to figure out where where I saw stuff, so.
And the sheriff's department, their vacation is just a little different. They do hours instead of days. So that they have a whole another section for the C that. So it's basically based on a nine hour day instead of a twelve. But Steiny said when they move to twelve hour days, because they have so many days off. That's why they do hours instead of uh days because.
Now, Amy, so I know we had a discussion within the department head meetings and maybe even said it here before, maybe it's about when you choose. The marker you use to convert the ninety to four, but you used to do it one way and then you you changed it?
I have always done it every month. It used to say annually.
Right.
And we've, my whole time I've ever been here, I've never done it annually. I've always done it monthly. So we were just updating the handbook to what I do.
But if someone gets sick days, like uh you don't wait till they can go up to ninety four days. Convert it back down to ninety. As soon as they tick over ninety, it goes, it gets converted.
It's actually once they hit the ninety four, ninety. Yeah, because when you take off the thirty two, then it's taken away below, so.
Okay.
But yeah, I, the handbook has always said that stump annually, which that made no sense to me. I've always done it monthly. So we just changed, made the handbook do what, say what I do.
It says here nine point four hours of vacation, five hundred times zero point one nine two. All right, it's a lot to.
So can we talk about reimbursement of expenses for a little bit? I would love to. You have a thought? Um. So if an elected official poses invoices, a claim and go over the respective. Say daily or it's not daily anymore, it's by meal, right? What authority do we really have to adjust? I want to.
That was just told we do.
I know, I was too. But I know what's gonna happen if I do.
It's not speaking like a.
Yeah, cause it's happened in the past.
Well, one argument on that side is that. Each elected official is, once their budget is approved, it's up to them to send it out or they want to, you're right. My argument is that we don't have the authority to tell them different, right? Rachel Burns is not an elected official or underneath an elected official's office.
No, and I'm not disputing hers at all.
I think that's kind of the fine line of. Is it an elected official's office or is it not?
Right.
Well, the problem is, you know, for approving the bottom line item and and we go through each line and we we think we're being fair. But you're using the funds for a meeting and you're using it as a vacation and the taxpayers are paying it. Exactly. What, what do we do?
Well, it goes back to the example that I always use of my wife at the library. City council approves her budget. She has the library board over her, very similar to public health. She could spend her entire budget fifty thousand on one book. Would it be wise? No. Can they stop it? You know? Well, what they can do, the city council, much like us, is the following year when we address the budget. We consider how they spent their budget.
Right, she bought the book for fifty thousand and then had to shut the library down for three hundred and sixty four days, cause they couldn't afford to pay any help or keep the lights on or. Do anything, it probably wouldn't be. Public wouldn't that be happy.
Right. So some of this, yes, we would like to address. We also have to be conscious of all elected officials' office and the responsibility that they bear. As well.
Well, and I will say, speaking as an employee and for the employees. I, the only thing I have ever seen on receipts is like a tip, or you know, and they know that's not paid. Alcohol, they know that's not paid. I've never had an employee have an issue with going over the limit or. I, you know, just haven't had, they know what the policy is and they, they abide by it. Now, elected officials, that is a whole nother issue, but as employees, I think everybody sticks with this policy.
Isn't it always kind of what's good for the goose is good for the gander kind of a deal? And so if you expect your employees to go to a meeting. And they're following uh what's set out as protocol and uh if you as the boss doesn't, what do you do?
Well, and I don't think there's anything you can do, except for I guess let the public know that, hey, you have an elected official that. Is misspending funds.
How often is it usually gonna happen?
I fortunately do not have to do overnight stuff, so that would be Michelle.
Yeah.
It's happened a few times.
Yeah, unfortunately, they've. And the checks and balances of that the ballot box are elected officials. Right, if the public, if if a person, if you felt that that was a. A egregious error and a misuse of funds, then you should go up and run against that individual and though. But a primary in the general and state the reason to the public why I'm doing it. Unfortunately, us five usually take the brunt of a lot of that because we aren't totally perceived in the public that.
And it's also perceived that everyone is doing it when it's not everybody. So there's that.
Thank you for that, yes.
I I do think what we as board need to do, it happened. When we get our financial statement, our financial expense report, we just sign the day. Something's red flagging this. Not right. We should probably in a public meeting, bring that up. Or at least bring in whoever's expense that was and ask them what, why, or what it is and let them explain in a public setting. So that the public knows.
I agree, and we have done that.
Good point.
I would agree with that.
So we will continue to do that, even though it doesn't really ever get us anywhere.
Well, we're doing our part of going over what Chris just said of internal checks and balances of. When we sign off on that expenditure toward, we looked it over. We have questions, we bring it up.
We do. Rarely do we make any.
So the the employee handbook then becomes effective like when we just make the motion to approve or July one or.
So we have the effective um July one, um and that is for a few reasons. Um, because I'm gonna have to change everybody's vacation schedule in the system, all of that. Um, our wage increases are coming up for July one. Um, would be a great time to also get that longevity out, put it in their base pay, so I'm not. Doing wage increases and then if we do this Aug- August first, I'm going back and doing that all again. Um, so that's why we have July one. If you have to, you know, take more time. That's fine, but um, but I mean, that's why we did the July one is because it's a new fiscal year. We've got all of these changes and it started on July one, you know.
Well, there's also been the talk about uh individuals not wanting to sign it. And how we go forward if we have no uh policy to follow if you're. If the signature is irrelevant or if it's. If it makes any difference if you sign and you don't sign uh the value of a handbook.
That's another conversation, but as of today. We can talk about that, but as of today, what's on our action, take up, take action item on our agenda is the updates to the handbook.
Right.
All right. Whether, I mean, two different things, same, similar, right, or tie together, but. It is to make these changes and then that is for another.
Right, and I will say if someone is not going to sign, I would, obviously the employees, this is the handbook. And I would hope that all the department heads or elected officials at least would have their employees sign it. If they don't, a- and that not just elected officials, but I will put this out to all the boards as well. So all the boards know we have updated our handbook, you know, are you gonna adopt our new revised handbook? For anybody that does not want to, they will need to provide policies for their office. So I know how to pay their people. I need to know. You you can't willy nilly say, oh, well, we're doing this on March. But oh, in August, we have this come up, so we're changing it and we're doing it this. That's not how, that's why we have audits. That's why we have all of those things in place. We have to have a policy in place before.
Absolutely.
So we know what to follow.
The other problem with not having a policy in place to follow is the liability of not treating everyone fairly. And somebody getting to do something while we were following this policy that day, but because we're not rolling crazy with you. We're not gonna follow it for you. You can't do that, but we did it for this person, cause.
And I do understand that they elected officials and the bo- the individual boards. They can have their own policies and they can do it however they want in their little silo. But everyone in that silo needs to be the same.
Right.
So if they are going to be different in that department and that, on that board. I need to have a policy. If they're not gonna follow this policy, I need to have a policy so I know. How, what am I doing for vacations? What am I doing for, you know, all of those things I need to know.
Done for you, so that you understand why there's a difference in certain.
Right, and I think that's because we've never had the elected officials or all these boards actually sign off on it. I mean, we've had some, some boards have, um but Chelsea, just because Jack had mentioned it before, because of the assessor's situation. Um, to have this signed every time we do a revision. And that's why we did that form this time, because it was advised to do it. Jack said he has it, other counties do it, we've just never done it, but now that's why.
And I did have a conversation uh with Jack this morning to just, you know, if you're not following the policy, you can't pick and choose which ones you are. You can't say, well, I'm gonna follow your vacation policy, but I'm not gonna follow your meals policy, you know? Really can't.
Well, and I think it's chaos. It, I think the way I understood Jack is they can follow everything. In the handbook, but say, you know what, um our vacation schedule is gonna be different. And that's fine, if that's what you're gonna do, fine, but I need to have that in writing. I have to have it in writing, what your, what your schedule is. So I know how to pay the employee. And everybody in your department is got that, you know, have that same vacation schedule, not the person that you like gets ten weeks. And the person you don't like gets two.
Right.
I mean, we just needed.
That's how we end up in loss.
Exactly. I mean, it would be great if everybody was had had the same vacation schedule, but.
I mean, like Dave said, the point today is the. I mean. There's, there's rumors that I have a department or whatever not sign it, but let's cross that bridge at that time, cause that's the one they wanted it. We could sit here and talk for hours. Public health don't sign, how are we gonna attack that? The assessor's office don't sign, that's gonna be a different view. So, I mean, God hope, you know, we're all. We're here for the same people to serve the taxpayers. Maybe everybody will just sign it and be happy with it.
Well, and it's very generous, so I don't know why.
So instead of sitting here and arguing the whole point of who's gonna sign or who's gonna sign, let's pass it. Pass the approval, the revision of the handbook.
I only thought would be as if there's something in this handbook that's creating a problem, you know, before we adopt it, could we address it?
I hate to be pulling Nancy Pelosi off, but we gotta pass it.
Well, and I will say, it was the department head. And it was created by the department head, so I mean.
There's a method, I guess, what I'm saying, Adam Chair, there's a method to the madness of my passing the revision of that's. The ones that we know of.
Okay.
We don't know until we pass it and then they.
They say I need this addendum.
I'll call the motion.
All right.
Made a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised employee handbook effective seven one of twenty four.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? If not, I will call a motion on favor. I. Any post same side? Chairman's side?
Now we can know where the chips are.
All right, there we go.
Yeah, and I'll get it out to all those boards and and all of that, so they know that and let them know what the. Well, and Chelsea did an amazing job to you, so.
Yeah, because there's a lot to it. There's a lot of things to take into consideration.
We're all in the same boat trying to paddle upstream.
Against the current.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved it.
They approved the permit so they can start digging hole.
That's what I was just gonna bring up. I just got the text from Cindy that I U B.
I got it too.
Yeah, I was gonna be talking to the public comment um. Released just this morning, it's a five hundred and seven page ruling.
Was there a dissent?
There is a dissent. In part, and there's also a. Incurrence in parts. And I haven't, I'm not familiar enough right now to go with the. But um it seems that the permit had been granted by the I U B to summit. They can, I believe one of the dissents was about, one of the I U B members wanted to. Essentially, it seemed like granted provisional permit to summit for Iowa. Based on their getting approval from the other states that the pipeline's gonna go to. And that Iowa will come into effect when the whole length of the pipeline from the other states. Like the South Dakota and North Dakota energy boards. Their equipment. And it seemed like they wanted to condition the permit almost like, you know. You can, you can start in Iowa once you have the whole entirety is secured. But that, I don't think that's the actual ruling. The actual ruling would allow them to begin with in Iowa regardless of what happens in other states.
So column one, what you sent us, I just wanted to clarify, but it says. The board, meaning I U B, found summit card could be vested with the right of eminent domain and. Based upon this finding, the board examined each of the eight hundred fifty nine outstanding parcels. Subject to a request for eminent domain to determine, based upon the record, whether to approve, deny, or modify each request. So does that mean that they could still deny an individual request?
Yes. Each eminent domain parcel is determined.
Individually. Determined by the I U B. Will determine that?
Eminent domain has to be approved by the I U B.
Okay, thank you.
There we go.
That's what I thought it said, but I was just surprised. I thought maybe when they granted it, it just automatically had everybody. Right, each individual parcel, but it's not that way.
It doesn't appear so.
This is only summons ruling, not, I know navigator pulled out, but.
Correct.
Another one comes in.
Right, just navigate or sell it to remember.
Property owner still has a low voice, perhaps, I mean, very by new.
Very mind.
Colin, what is the process then for the counties like Shelby and the consecutive story? Is that just gonna be in court?
It'll be up for them to decide. Um, you know, those counties can. Try to find a way to attack the ruling.
Cause we're, you know, told that ordinance on one hand was gonna stand up after a ruling. But if they're in court about whether they legitimately can do that.
I mean, I don't wanna, of course, I do not wanna speak for other counties, you know, they can determine the course of action, but. I imagine if they can secure some kind of injunction. I imagine if they can secure some kind of injunction from a federal court. You know, that would, that would give them a, a temporary stay while the litigation proceeded.
Okay.
Next, I got one. So, next week we are gonna roll out our. Our soil restoration, stuff that we've been talking about. How's that playing? I mean, with this, I still think we need to have the, the time to let the public know.
You know, we can still do that and the board can still consider actions, um, that would be allowable under the ruling and under. Various kind of codes we, I've been giving you pamphlets on.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, there might be still room to maneuver, I mean. We just have to figure out where those, where those lines are.
Right.
All right, keep that on our agenda for good sweep.
So we're meeting on the first.
On the first.
Monday.
Oh, okay.
Put that on your panel.
We are coming for cash calls, so it's happening.
Okay.
So, there we go.
And we'll have a Friday the twenty-eighth, or.
Right.
That'll be a very short, quick meeting.
Yep, I think left before he comes.
Should last, lasting two minutes.
I can do it.
I can, that's why I appreciate Zoom.
Anybody out in Zoom, uh, have any public, uh, citizen input? You out there yet? All right, on months, Colin, anything else in citizen input?
Um. On the, maybe I should open up on the issue of the handbook, as you guys brought up some, some other issues. Uh, I have been emailing back and forth with Jack. You come up with lots of language that's, that's ready for both parties and we're moving forward, so.
Good.
Good. Good news, thank you.
Should have had that language in the handbook we just approved.
It's not in the handbook. It's the.
Agreement.
Separate agreement.
Okay, yeah. Got you, okay.
All right, that's way to take care of that. All righty.
Appreciate that.
Input, uh, this input is over. If, uh, we're done, I need an adjournment.
Will we adjourn?
Second. For the discussion, otherwise I'll call a roll call. On favor?
All right, aye.
Repose, all right, meeting has been adjourned. All right, we kept it moving.